Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to welcome you all, welcome all of you to the board meeting this afternoon. To access translations, please click on the globe icon below or at Dejawn, you can go to the corner of the room to get translation. We're heading into our closed session for tonight. Before we do, we are here to listen to any public comment there might be on our closed session items. The public gets two minutes per comment, per speaker. The closed session items that we will be discussing tonight are: Public employee appointment, closed session regarding compromise and release agreement, pending litigation pursuant to the government code, public employee discipline dismissal of release and complaint, public employee performance evaluation, and that is all. Staff, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. Our first public comment is Shalyn. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, I'm district board members. I just want to say I am very sad and disappointed.
Can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
Our next public comment is Nashira McCoy. Please unmute yourself.
Yes, hi, can you hear me? Hello? Can you hear me? Hello?
Unmute yourself.
I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
She, uh, we can hear them, we can't hear them in the room, but I think that they are speaking.
I definitely heard Ms. McCoy say something, but not very loudly.
It was in my computer because I unmuted it all.
You heard it?
Yeah.
Hello, can you?
Ms. McCoy, can you try again?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, I was also able to hear Shalyn when she was on as well, so I think that it was probably the issue that you guys identified.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hi, everyone, members of the board. I am here to speak on the appointment of the principal for Stewart K-8 school. I wrote an email to you also. You may have already received it and gotten the gist of my sentiment, but I'm really just writing in or calling in to express kind of the sadness and the disappointment in the entire process. I know we received notification last night of the appointment for the interim principal, but it just seemed like this entire process was not transparent. I was a part of the listening session and had put an application in to be a part of the hiring panel, and it just was complete silence for two weeks. And then all of a sudden, an agenda item popped up on the meeting for this evening, and it just seemed like it was kind of just like a farce and that there wasn't really any effort to have our involvement in the hiring. And I don't believe that that's necessary in terms of HR rules and things like that. It just seems like the lack of communication leads to mistrust. So I think that the process that is used to select, you know, new personnel and things like that can be more transparent and the communication can be better to the community. It could have been as simple as in the listening session stating if we're hiring internally or if there are circumstances where a decision has to be made, we won't be having this hiring panel. We won't be requiring input or just even responding to the applications and saying, we're not going to do this. So the folks that were interested could have been, had some kind of insight into what was going on. It just seemed to be sprung on us out of nowhere.
Next public comment is Shalyn. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so I'm so sad and disappointed for the way that the district has handled the hiring process of our new principal at Stewart. As a parent and PTA president, I attended the town hall meeting just like Nashira, and that was conducted by Deshawn Givens and Camille Johnson to discuss our school and the needs of our new principal. In that meeting, we were asked plain, I personally asked plainly if the new principal would be hired on an interim basis because of the issues we had when Mr. Hamilton was out on medical leave. Dr. Camille Johnson responded saying that HR would not be hiring interim because they didn't want multiple principals in the position. This is what she said exactly, that they would hire the position directly. I asked what the timeline would be, and again, Dr. Johnson responded by saying that they were making this panel. They wanted all the voices to be heard for the interviews, which I signed up to be, and I appreciate that they wanted to do that. And after the HR would look over the candidates and they would move on to the interview process. We were told that this would take until December and that, and that the candidate would be put on the December board agenda. I was shocked when I read the agenda for today and noticed a K-8 principal appointment, and after multiple parents emailed the board members and district employees asking if that was for Stewart, we were informed that yes, that you had already confirmed the appointment and pointing out that that was confirmed and approved before this closed session. My question, or should I say concern, is why is the school, the school community continuously lied to? When we asked point blank to the HR director and we were continuously lied to about that, all we want is, is to have communication, to have it transparent, and I think that we deserve this. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Katia Arasate.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, um, yeah, I'm just following along with what both Shalyn and Ashira said. We just wanted that communication is our biggest concern. Our concern is not about who it is specifically, it's not about who you guys are trying to put there. It's more about you guys didn't give us that notice, hey, we're, we might just follow along ourselves instead of doing the panel. That's our biggest concern, what, what it is. It's not about the person, but it's more about not letting us know and just all of a sudden spring in and on to us. This is gonna happen, it's gonna happen on this date, it might follow along without letting us know prior and giving us that heads up of, hey, that panel that we discussed, maybe that's not gonna happen. That's all we wanted to know because we heard nothing and then for such a long time and then hearing something, hey, this is gonna happen now. It's, that's where we get thrown off, just not having that communication of saying, uh, we might just follow along ourselves since it's difficult, which we can understand that, but we just want to know what is going on without being told this is gonna happen next with nothing beforehand. We're a community that can speak up, as you can see, we've emailed and we're doing these calls. So we just want to be communicated back when we try and communicate to you guys. So I'm not trying to say it's about the person that's being hired or not. It's more about us having that communication with the district and with the board. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you very much for your public comment. We will reconvene for open session at 6:30. Thank you, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you all to our board meeting tonight. To access translation, please click on the globe icon below or at Dejawn, you can go to the corner of the room to get, to get the materials. We are returning from closed session. After our opening procedures, the public will have the opportunity to make public comment. The board has changed public comment format. We have opportunities on non-agenda items in person through the Zoom app and by telephone at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment will last one hour. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. If you're attending the meeting in person, you will need to submit a request to address the board form to indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item. After it's been turned into staff, they are placed in order of when they are turned in. We also call on speakers one at a time and alternating between public comment at Dejawn and one on Zoom. If participating via Zoom, you need to raise your hand by clicking the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine if accessing the meeting by phone. No yielding to time or substitution of speakers permitted. The public will also have an opportunity to make public comment on agenda items after the staff presentation for each discussion and action item. The public will have 10 minutes per item and one minute per speaker. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Now let's move to our opening procedures. First, we'll have the pledge of allegiance. If you are willing and able, please rise.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hurst. We are now moving to agenda item B3, the land, labor, and body acknowledgement. Staff, do we have that video ready?
We recognize that we are on the lands of the Chiltenyo, Huaca, Cari, and Alamo people and acknowledge them as the persons inhabitants of the land we currently occupy.
Thank you very much, Pinot Valley High School. We are now moving to our labor and body recognition. I acknowledge that the burden of environmental exploitation and systemic injustice falls upon the labor of black and brown bodies in the building of this country and its institutions. I remember that black and brown people were born and died working this land against their will for generations. I also acknowledge the continued contribution of the labor survivors over the centuries to today of all immigrant labor, including voluntary, involuntary, trafficked, forced, and undocumented peoples in the building of what we refer to as the United States. We are now moving to agenda item B4, the West Contra Costa Unified School District School Board Anti-Racist Statement. The West Contra Costa School District Board of Education is committed to the work of anti-racism, the conscious and active effort to identify, challenge, and correct racial inequities in all systems and institutions within our, within our schools and community. Racism, explicit or implicit, stands in direct conflict to the fundamental principles of WCCUSD education. To carry WCCUSD education to the future, we recognize that we must continually renew and reflect on the roots of racism and develop new ideas to meet the times. Unjust ideas and policies, the racial inequity they produce, have shaped us, our students, and our society. We strive to uncover, uncover unconscious biases and practice anti-racism as individuals and as board members. We challenge ourselves to persist through the discomfort necessary for growth and learning, to deepen our listening and our examination of racism and oppression, and to develop strong understanding of how our personal experiences and feelings fit into a larger picture of continual oppression. Each member of our school board individually and collectively is responsible for creating and nurturing an anti-racist learning environment where each student, staff member, and community partner is respected and valued member of WCCUSD community. We are uniquely positioned, and it is our responsibility to identify and dismantle racist ideas and inequitable practices in ourselves and across the district. Therefore, we commit to supporting anti-racist policies, programs, and practices for our children's education and well-being while building strong and inclusive school communities. We commit to holding each board member accountable towards these goals and moving the work of anti-racism forward. We also commit to holding West Contra Costa Unified School District staff, students, and community to live in these standards of anti-racism in our schools. Dr. Hurst, we are now moving to agenda item B5, roll call. Could you please do roll call?
Yes, ma'am. President Smith Folds.
Good evening, everyone, present.
Clerk Gonzalez Hoyer.
Good evening, President.
Trustee Reckler.
Good evening, I'm present.
Trustee Phillips. Absent. Trustee Christian.
Good evening, President.
Trustee Luke Wilson.
Good evening, President.
Trustee Jorge Espinoza Jr.
Good evening, President.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. We are now moving to agenda item B6, report ratification of closed session. Sir, is there anything to report out?
Yes, ma'am. Regarding agenda item A2.1, the board voted to approve the appointment of Charlotte Besson as the interim K-8 principal of Stewart K-8. The vote was as follows: trustee Christian, yes. Clerk Gonzalez Hoyer, yes. Trustee Phillips, absent. Trustee Reckler, no. President Smith Folds, yes. Regarding item A2.2, the board took action to approve the special education settlement agreement in OAH case number 2024090402. The board voted as follows: trustee Christian, yes. Trustee Reckler, yes. President Smith Folds, yes. Clerk Gonzalez Hoyer, yes. With trustee Phillips, absent. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for that report out. We are now moving to item B7, a student performance from Hercules High School, The Mighty Titans. Ms. Catherine, this is your item.
Thank you. Good evening, President Smith Folds, board members and members of the community. Today, we have the pleasure of presenting the award-winning Hercules High School Advanced Orchestra for our student performance, and I would love to welcome to the podium music director, Ms. Arlene Wong, to introduce the performance.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, school board members. Yes, this is the Hercules High School Advanced Orchestra, comprising mostly of our 11th and 12th grade. This is our most prestigious group of musicians at our school. I am very proud to say that we represent WCCUSD very well. They have performed on the state level twice, and they will be again performing on the state level this coming spring at Sonoma State University. I'm just really a proud teacher of all these amazing students. Parents out here, thank you so much, school board, thank you so much. I'm literally in my dream job. Thank you. Um.
This one can stand here.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are gonna take a five-minute break so the Hercules High School Orchestra can break down. Can we give them one more round of applause, please? Thank you so much, and we will resume our meeting at six fifty-six. Thank you, everyone. Six fifty-six. Thank you. Thank you so much. We are back from our break. Again, thank you to the Hercules High School Band. We are now moving on to item B eight, West Contra Costa Unified School District Public Comment. How to address the board? Members of the public are invited to speak to the board about any matter that is not otherwise on the agenda and is related to issues affecting public education in West Contra Costa Unified School District. Public comment will last approximately sixty minutes. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. Individuals wishing to speak must submit a WCCUSD public comment form, or if participating via Zoom, individuals will need to raise their hand in the Zoom app. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Again, public comment will last one hour at two minutes. After the one-hour mark, public comment will go down to one minute for the next thirty minutes. So, public comment will be one minute for the next thirty minutes. So, total public comment is an hour and a half. Dr. Hurst, before we start public comment, do you have something?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. I want to ask if Melissa Payne could share a little bit about what's going on at Richmond High School and what we're doing to resolve that issue.
Good evening, Board, Superintendent, community. My name is Melissa Payne. I work with the Facilities and Maintenance Operations Department, and I do have an update for you tonight for Richmond High. In order to repair the lights and the field, it takes a very specialized contractor to do that. And so, we needed to find a specialized turf contractor and lighting contractor in order to do those repairs. We have secured three specialized contractors, all that are licensed, registered, and are now contracted to perform those repairs so that we can complete those repairs and restore the field. The challenge that we're going to face is the weather. So, we're going to need for it to dry up a little bit before we can complete those turf repairs. But I want you to know that we have all three contractors procured, contracted, and we will be making those repairs. I also want to thank you for your advocacy and for really elevating the issue. We're going to get that resolved, and we'll be sure to provide an update once the weather clears up a little bit, and you'll see the contractors out at the site.
Thank you very much. Sorry, go ahead, sir. That's it. Thank you very much. We are now going to move on to public comments. Staff, do we have public comment?
Yes, we do. Our first public comment is Anthony Quinteros.
Uh, basarde, pues me llamo Anthony Quinteros, y soy estudiante y líder de varsity en Richmond High School. Soy de grado once. Ah, les quiero decir a la mesa que por favor nos apoyen a reparar nuestro campo. Yo soy de Salvador y tengo dos años aquí en Richmond. Muchos de mis compañeros en el equipo de fútbol también son emigrantes, y en el campo de la escuela es el único lugar donde podemos jugar. Casi la mitad de mis compañeros no juegan en un club de fútbol, y este año tenemos tres equipos para todos los que no tienen un club. La high school es donde podemos ir a jugar y pasar el día. El fútbol es una gran parte de esta comunidad y de nuestra vida. Este año pasado jugamos partidos muy difíciles contra equipos que son entre los mejores del estado. Nosotros enfrentamos a estos equipos también en nuestra cancha. Deseamos jugar contra los equipos más fuertes de locales para que sea más fácil que nos ven a ver nuestros padres, tíos, primos y hermanos. Por favor, ayúdenos a tener nuestros partidos en casa esta temporada. Nuestro partido es el siguiente martes. Ya se nos está acabando el tiempo. Gracias.
Our next public comment is Maisha Harris Gash. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. Happy Wednesday. Hopefully, everyone's doing well. So, I looked at the board agenda, and I see that we are going to have a partnership with San Jose State University and their teaching program. San Jose State is where I went to college, some of the best years of my life. And I always tell my students, hey, before you say you don't know anything about college, you don't want to go. You've got to give yourself at least one year. So, I'm like super excited about that. And hopefully during the time of the partnership, I will have an opportunity to interact with other alum from San Jose State. And then, so on Wednesdays, I share a video, motivational video with my kids. And so, usually I go to Dr. Eric Thomas E.T., the hip-hop preacher. So, today, it was titled "Your Core." So, I talk to my kids about your core of your body and how it provides balance, so you know, pretty for you to be upright and all that kind of stuff. If you trip and stumble, you're going to use your core to find your balance. But what E.T. was talking about is his core being his principles for life. So, we had a conversation and discussion about their principles for life. I say, yeah, I know you guys are young. This is the beginning. You're going through puberty and all this kind of stuff. But also, they're very familiar with E.T. as well and his story. But just to share with them, your guiding principles to success are your guiding principles. So, I'd like one to share with everyone, like your core. What is your core about? Who you are? Most of you guys know, to my core, I'm an educator. It is my purpose and it is my passion. And that we should not be hesitant to share with our students, what is your individual purpose and passion? Because how are they going to know what it looks like when they see it each and every day of somebody operating in their purpose? So, I just wanted to share that. Hope everybody has a wonderfully blessed night, and until next time.
Our next public comment is Eric Ramirez Martinez.
There's a little button right there that has a face on it. You see it?
It's on. We're good. Good evening. My name is Eric Ramirez Martinez. I'm a junior at Richmond High School, and I'm also one of the leaders for the boys varsity soccer team. It has taken a very long time to fix the issues with the school field, over seven months. None of the problems have been fixed, and it looks like no one's even tried to fix them. We want to be able to play our soccer season at home. We have seniors who have been on the team for the past four years and want to play their senior night and their last playoff games at home. Games at home are very special to us. Our community comes together and supports the team, the school, the city against some real tough teams. Games, oh wait, here's the quote from somebody who has no stake in this situation after an NCS playoff game at Richmond High School. And I quote, "As a San Ramon Valley High School parent, I want to say a few words about the Richmond fans. Thank you for your spirit, passion, and sportsmanship. It was an incredible environment. The Richmond fans were singing, chanting, and yelling. The fans supported their team for eighty minutes plus. For me, it was an exciting game to watch as any level of soccer pro international. Thank you, Richmond. You show many reasons why soccer is a beautiful sport." End of quote. "Please help us play at home, and please help us get our field back. Thank you."
Our next public comment is Rodney Alamo Brown. Please unmute yourself.
I'd like to say good evening, Board. This is Rodney Alamo Brown, community advocate here in the city of Richmond, California. I'm becoming a little disgusted at this time, and my patience is kind of running thin. Sadly, our children who are at the makeshift campus over at Dejounte Middle School have experienced a gas leak. Now, this is another health concern, as you all know, with the children over there on Cypress Avenue dealing with the feces on the floor and the urine, as well as the asbestos in the lead and other contaminants that they had to deal with for the last lord knows how long. We, as a community, thought this would be on the agenda for today's meeting. Ironically, it is not. You'll hear some of my colleagues come on here this evening and speak upon this horrible, horrible condition that our children are facing. Now, I listened to what Dr. Smith Foul said pertaining to the manifestation about racism within the sector of our school district and about our children having equitable foundations to have an equitable right to an education. Now, when I saw everyone over last week, one of those schools, I can't recall who it was, and they were talking about Ruby Bridges. This is a slap in the face to Ruby Bridges. It's also a slap in the face to Brown versus the Board of Education. It's also a slap in the face to Sylvester Greenwood, Dr. Cam, W.W. Snodgrass, and those who came before them. Now, I'm hoping and praying that you all have enough gall, next time the board meeting takes place, to speak about moving our children to Alvarado School where they should have been. Let's do away with this Oshawa concentration camp over there at Dejounte Middle School and give our children the rights that they deserve. Thank you very much.
Our next public comment is Cruz Giovanni Diaz.
Good evening. I am Cruz Giovanni Diaz Vilches, and I am a junior at Arches High School. I'm also a team leader for the boys varsity team. I want to ask the board to get our field fixed so we can play our games at home. We have been waiting for seven months. We have seen nothing happen. A lot of players and family are asking, why don't they fix the field? Why is the field not even maintained? Why do we have weeds growing through the turf in the middle of the field? Why don't we have a safe goals? Would it happen in richer schools like El Cerrito, for example? I was told our school and Kennedy High School would only be renovated, not rebuilt from scratch like E.C., D.A., and Pennell. Why? This does not seem fair. It does not seem right. So, show us that this trick is fair, not by what you say, but show it by what you do. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Shallen. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, okay. So, I'm here to talk to you again about Stuart. I talked previously in closed session. And I just want to reiterate that I'm very disappointed in the process of hiring our new principal. And you guys, the district, put out a saying that, um, that we would have the opportunity to be on the hiring panel and then that was taken away when we got the email last night, that someone was appointed before a board even got to approve that. And when I spoke at open, um, closed session, um, I was hoping that some of you would hold, um, the district accountable for them releasing that information, for them saying that someone was appointed without your approval. As a board, that's supposed to be approved by you. Thank you. Thank you, trustee Regler, for standing up and saying no, making sure that the district is obeying by what they're saying and really getting your approval. And everyone else, I'm sad that you let the district bully you into the situation and, 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 and accept it, even though you should have accepted it after the fact. I mean, they released it after the fact or before the fact that you even got to, um, vote for it. So, um, I'm really sad that you did that. We're excited to work with Charlotte. Um, but the way that the district did it is very sad. And it just shows that you guys wanted to do some part of transparency when you did the listing party, but then to go back on that and not be transparent with it is very disheartening. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Aldo Amaya.
Hello, my name is Aldo Amaya. I'm here to address the board regarding the issues at the Richmond High School soccer field. As students and athletes, we're concerned that we won't have the opportunity to play the sport that we love in our home school. We dedicate ourselves daily to practice and sacrifice personal plans to play soccer. We would like to request, uh, the board to help us get a home soccer field because it would mean a lot to us because now, since we don't have a, uh, home soccer field, we won't be able to play home and playing home would be like a good thing for us because that helps us with more motivation and, um, yeah, thank you.
Our next public comment is Tenetta Thompson. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, board. In a letter dated October eighteenth and sent to the public and media and not to myself or our JV and varsity teams, Malcolm Norrington self-reported that CIF and CS bylaw two oh two regarding transfer eligibility were violated by the ECHS football team predominantly black and brown students. The violation Norrington states as his vehicle to look into the entire roster and later have district employees request school housing records for these students is based on a white family's violation of CIF bylaw two oh two by submitting fraudulent documents to NCS. This white family is not even enrolled at EC at the time. How is the district now accepting Norrington's clear admittance of Title IX McKinney-Bento Act and civil rights violations as binding and took away our whole season when clearly violating the California State Education Code? The district attempted to respond to our concerns by saying this had nothing to do with school attendance and registration, but NCS. And they punted to NCS for this. What the district is failing to realize is that when you rely on the NCS bylaws, that only has to do with transfers. It does not have to do with my black son who has been enrolled since ninth grade. It does not exempt the district and the principal from giving parents notice and getting board approval to seek the registration records of our unhoused students, JV students, and those who have been enrolled, played sports last year in season, and already cleared by NCS. SIGIF bylaws do not trump state law. After speaking with the California Board of Education, we know what happened to us is in violation of our rights and which is why we filed these Title IX complaints which have been received by the district. We are following the processes and will be seeking all legal remedies available to us. But these are not the only violations that Norrington and the district have done. They have done Fourth Amendment violations by searching our black football team members. A black female student was illegally searched on the boat cruise by Norrington. Norrington threatened to take offers and said that he would dismantle the entire football program. Is this what we have to fear, that a principal is so against his own school and those that look like him, that a white family's fraud is taken out on our team?
Our next public comment is Rosie Hernandez.
Hi, good evening. My name is Rosie Hernandez. I am a mom of a freshman student at Richmond High School and also a seventh grader at Helms Middle School. I currently also sit as chair of the SSC at Helms. So, I have had a little bit of experience with your political arena and how, um, funds are authorized and given to the different schools, which is the reason why I wanted to bring up what is going on with Richmond High and the field. I, I definitely see a lot of politics and a lot of play in that area and it's very unnecessary to have to have the entire teams or all our teams come and basically beg for a field to be restored when you are elected to serve our, our children. Um, politics aside and, and whatever your future or what you desire out of this position that you're in, they should be the focus. Um, I also am very involved with our San Pablo United Youth Soccer Club and have seen how long it takes to restore fields. Our Helms field, we lost for an entire year because there was no goal. That just was repaired and only because Richmond High is no longer available for us to use because of the, the different things wrong with it. Um, and that, like I said, took over a year. And I appreciate the update that you gave about the potential restoration. But given that it took a year to just put a goal in, at Helms, doesn't give me much hope about having a field restored in time to play our home games. Um, this is my son's first time playing and I very much want to see him play at Richmond High where we wanted to attend and play. So I strongly, um, ask you to please consider really making an emphasis and this a priority. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Johanna Gordian. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, good evening, board. Uh, my name is Johanna Gordian. I am here representing Hodi Contra Costa. Um, and tonight I just wanted to really urge you all to, um, ensure that you allocate the full seventy-seven million dollars in bond money to the rebuild project of Stige. Um, this is long overdue. Um, as you know, Stige Elementary has been deprioritized for decades now. Um, and so it's only appropriate to ensure that this full buildout happens. Um, we need to make sure that the students and families of Stige are a priority to this district, especially after all the toxins and chemicals and exposures that they were exposed to for who knows how long. Um, again, please ensure that the full seventy-seven million dollars in bond money are dedicated to the full buildout of Stige and to also either upgrade, um, and really refurbish the temporary site or move them to a location that is more, uh, safe for their health. Causes less congestion and traffic with the middle schoolers and their parents. And so please, again, I urge you all to allocate the full seventy-seven million dollars, um, in bond funds to the rebuild of Stige Elementary and to ensure a more proper, uh, temporary site is fitted for those students to be at for the remainder of the construction project. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Samantha Torres.
Uh, good evening, board members and staff. My name is Samantha Torres and I've been here before many times uh, to discuss soccer field access issues on behalf of my soccer club, the Richmond United Soccer Club. But today, I'm here as a teacher and soccer coach for the wonderful students at Richmond High School. The soccer field issues brought to your attention today are standard maintenance issues covered by funds like the MRAD. The MRAD stands for the Maintenance and Recreation Assessment District Fee, which was a voter-approved, uh, voter-approved measure in nineteen ninety-four and collects five point six million dollars every year for maintenance and recreation of facilities at schools for public access as in non-school use. Every homeowner in the district pays seventy-two dollars a year for the MRAD regardless if they have any WCCUSD students in their household. The MRAD is not a bond measure and thus is not subject to any committee oversight. Last month, I spoke about the Helms Middle School field issues and this was not resolved by the district itself, but rather a collaboration between the Richmond United Soccer Club and the San Pablo United Youth Soccer Club. We donated and transported these goals to allow Helms to reopen urgently due to the RHS field issues. Yet, our clubs still pay for field access, which we gladly did to support our kids. But the bigger question is, if we're donating soccer equipment the district cannot fund and we still pay to use these fields for club games, where are the MRAD dollars going? If neither public users, users nor school programs are getting full use of the recreational school facilities due to the basic maintenance they lack, where are those five point six million dollars of the MRAD actually going? I hope you all have a wonderful Thanksgiving break. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Renee Silas.
Coach Renee has asked that I read his letter to you. Okay, these are his words, not mine. My name is Renee Silas. I have been the boys varsity soccer coach at Richmond High for twenty-five years. I am glad we have many of our students and their families present here tonight. It will show them how important the democratic process is, what it looks like, and that it is always important to get informed and to fight for what they want and to vote. At this time, the issues with the field mainly impact the girls and boys soccer programs, the PE program, and the after-school program at Richmond High. We have five soccer teams at Richmond. That is about a hundred and fifty students, over ten percent of the student body. They use the field from the end of classes until nine P.M. every day. They play ten games a week for three months. That is five home games on our field a week. On the field, our boys varsity team has represented WCCUSD well. They should hit their four-hundredth win this season, counted from two thousand. They have been in the top ten nationally seven times. They have won their league many times. They have been to NCS playoffs every year since nineteen ninety-eight. They have won the section twice and have been state finalists once. The team did not get a red card in over four years. The boys varsity team's sportsmanship triggered the creation of the College Israel Program, which started in two thousand and seven at Richmond High School with five soccer players. The program's goal is to better prepare high school students to apply and to be accepted at colleges and universities. Today, hundreds of students in three WCCUSD high schools participate in College Israel and many seniors went to college in part because of this program. In two thousand and six, the soccer program raised one million dollars for the construction of the first incarnation of the RHS turf field. Today, after months of waiting, we cannot seem to get our goals, lights, or field fixed. There has been no visible sign of progress as we reach the end of the first month of the season. For the first time since the creation of the soccer program, we cannot play games at home. These students and their families, our community, deserve better. Please help them. Please get the field fixed soon. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Ben Schalki.
Good evening, board members. Um, my name is Ben Schalki. I'm a resident of, uh, El Cerrito. My kids, uh, went through the West Contra Costa School District System, three kids. They all graduated from college. They did great. I'm also a member of the Design Review Board in El Cerrito and a member, or was a member of the Parks and Rec Commission. And the reason I'm here, I'm also an avid tennis player. And a member of the tennis community at large, Richmond, El Cerrito, Berkeley. A few weeks ago, I went to play tennis at the El Cerrito High School and was extremely disappointed to find an eight-foot fence, chain-linked fence, uh, that's facing the street and is blocking access into the, into the tennis courts. Those tennis courts are extremely widely used. There's five courts there. There, we worked with Luis Fries to keep them open because those were originally city courts that when the high school was rebuilt were left to be, uh, public access. So, this fence is gonna block access to the courts and it's also an eyesore to the community. Um, I sent an email to everybody. I don't know if you saw the, the PDF, the exhibit that I showed, but there is an option, if, if security is an issue and there's, all the fields are surrounded by fences, you know, everything, there's a maze of fences there already. But if you wanna block off that parking area, there's a way of doing that and pushing the fence back and still allowing public access. Um, I would also like to, uh, work with Melissa. I, I didn't know Luis retired, to continue the public access to, to, uh, people who wanna play tennis. Instead of, uh, limiting sports and, uh, you should be encouraging, uh, sports, encouraging tennis with the people that play tennis, encouraging soccer with the people that play soccer. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Alberto Chavez.
Good evening. My name is Alberto Chavez and I'm a senior at Richmond High School. I play soccer on the boys varsity team and I'm a team leader. I would like to address the board tonight to ask them to have the Richmond High School soccer field fixed as soon as possible. Three of the four goals were reported broken back in April of twenty twenty-four. Two of them are unstable and very dangerous. Thirty percent of the lights at the field are out, seventy percent are out on the south end of the field. This was also first reported back in April of twenty twenty-four. There is a sinkhole at the northwest corner of the field that was reported in September. There has been zero visible progress on these three issues since they were reported. Soccer is very important in our community. We want to be able to play at home for our community and our school. Please do what you can to help us. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Leah MacIntosh. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. Hi. My name is Leah MacIntosh. I am a member of the Stige School community and I'm, I'm back again. I have a couple of questions for you. How do you get an item put on your agenda? I know you have to, uh, publish it uh, at least twenty-four, seventy-two hours in advance and no one returns my phone call when I call the district. So that's number one. Number two is that I'm back again asking you to be empathetic and sympathetic to the students at Stige that are now at Dejón. So today it poured, it rained. Those little kids had to walk from their classrooms to the toilet with no cover for rain protection. When, uh, the second thing is that they're still in a situation where they have no playgrounds available for them. They're children. They're under twelve. They need to be able to play. Remember? Play, recess, play. Uh, so that's very important. And also, um, I'd like to have you consider moving the children from Dejón Middle School to, uh, the Adult Education School on Huntington of the old Alvarado Campus. It would be more appropriate setting for them to, uh, go to school for the next three years until you rebuild Stige Elementary School. Thank you for your time and attention and please let somebody return phone calls to the public. Greatly appreciated. Thank you. Goodbye.
Our next public comment is Kim Chamberlain.
I'm gonna say this really quickly. Bo? Good evening. I am Kimberly Chamberlain. I am PTE Local Twenty-One SSA Chapter President. I am here to say welcome to November. Welcome to our rainy season. Hope everybody is taking all the precautions. Hope everybody is taking all the precautions. But I was out for a little bit, got sick, got better, made sure everything was still running smoothly, and am here to say a huge thank you to all of our community people out there. Ed benefits, you know that is my baby. That is the one that I love to keep moving on with. So, a huge thank you to our schools, scouts, secretaries, principals, after-school program coordinators, attendants, clerks, parent volunteers. You did above and beyond outreach, communication, everything you possibly could to achieve our goal. Our goal ended up being eighty-five percent. I think that is amazing. That is an overall twelve percent increase from the year before. Give you all a big round of applause. I cannot say enough. You did it. You pushed it out there. My team and my office, I would like to say a huge congratulations and thank you. They spoke to tons and tons of people, parents, community people. They outreach, and they put the forms in manually. They did it the best that they could, and I can't say enough for congratulations. It was huge. Thank you. Thank you very, very much. The other thing I want to say is I think this season is going to be a wonderful season. Our families have opportunities that California has never been given previously. They can take advantage of independent city contracts when they are sick now and bring in some good educational benefits to their students where they can keep the learning process going rather than having to fall back and try to catch up. They are going to have that opportunity because they have been given that chance. So, thank you.
Our next public comment is Elaine Keith.
Good afternoon. My name is Elaine Keith. I am a daycare provider who have children at Stige. We're now at Dejean. It's very heartbreaking to find out thirteen days ago, we received an email from the principal that there was a gas leak. And as of today, nothing has happened. Our children are sitting in that building, and it's cold. It's cold. And what really bothers my heart is Monday night, the TK bathroom was broken into. There were drugs left in there. Drugs left in the TK's bathroom. What are we doing? Why are we putting our children in danger? Who are we? Do we not care about our children? Do we not care about our future? These are our future, our children. They're sitting. The other day, when I received, because I'm on the parent square, when I received a text that the gas was off, I went in there on Friday. I was there for ten minutes and had a headache. Can you imagine what those teachers and those children had to deal with on Friday? And guess what? We still have not been notified that it has been fixed. What are we going to do? Why do our children have to sit in that school that is not equipped for them, period, and they have to sit there and freezing? We need to put our big pants on and do what we're supposed to do. These are our children. I pray that every one of you can sit, lay down at night and go to sleep and don't worry.
Our next public comment is Laura Harper.
Hello. My name is Laura Harper. I'm standing before you. Want to talk about Stige Elementary School? I grew up right across the street from Stige on the corner of Forty-Ninth and Potrero. I'm a product of Stige. But lately, every time I walk out of my mother's front door, there's homeless people sleeping on the doorsteps of Stige on Potrero. I have photos. I've called the police. They removed them. Two days later, they come back and they're sleeping on the steps. And the building itself has been neglected because the kids aren't there, the grass has grown. It looks abandoned. So, they're making their home on the steps of the door on Stige on Potrero side. And I'm sure that they're using the electricity because they're plugging it. They have bikes. They have everything there. So, my question is, what happened to the security that used to drive down Potrero, shining the light on the school to making sure everything's okay? I know the kids aren't there, but they did that at night. What happened to that? And why aren't they still doing it? Because if it looks abandoned, guess what? The homeless is going to come. And I feel bad that they have no place to go, but that's not a place. That's still your responsibility. And that's still your responsibility. I can't say that enough, you know? Because what happens if something happened to them? They're going to try to sue you. So, we need to take care of that to make sure that you still have the security that come by and check on that and make sure that the homeless haven't set up. Because going down Potrero, it just does not look good. And they're just throwing stuff, eating, just stuff everywhere. Nobody comes to clean the building. Nobody comes to clean the grounds. No-
And our last public comment is Victor Ward.
Good evening. My name is Victor Ward, and I'm here to talk about Proposition Twenty-Eight, which, as you know, guarantees one percent of a school's budget to go to the expansion of the arts program. In California, there are five core arts: dance, music, visual arts, theatrical arts, and the newest one is media arts. The following items all fall under the umbrella of media arts: podcasts, live and video streaming, TikTok, YouTube, Twitch, Instagram, Sony PlayStation X, VR, electronic arts, Spotify, Snap, and of course, my company, CompeteTV. Now, that creates a little bit of a dissonance because the governor, a couple of months ago, banned cell phones on campus. And I understand what the governor was trying to do, but if the educational system does not begin to see this as an educational tool, one of the greatest educational tools we've ever seen, the educational system is going to lose. Going to any after-school program, every student is on their phone. Every student is using technology. My company is like TikTok, except it's better. It's only designed for students and only designed for schools. Think about a merger of TikTok and a museum, or TikTok and American Idol. It's also a competitive platform. I'm just here to introduce the company, hopefully, maybe to meet with the superintendent briefly or someone on the executive committee to see about next steps. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you very much, community. Thank you for your public comment. Thank you, staff, for facilitating public comment. Dr. Hurst, would you like to say anything?
Yes, we just want to address some comments about Stige and the gas leak, and I want to turn it over to Ms. Lapaine.
Good evening. When we first received a report about the smell of gas at the temporary campus, our maintenance team did respond to the site and turned off the gas. There are tree roots that are impeding the path of the gas line, which is underground. Last weekend, we removed the tree. Next week, when the site is unoccupied, we have contractors already in place that are going to hand dig out all of the tree roots as well as the gas line and completely replace it. So, the long-term fix will be in place before school resumes again on December second. And we have done temporary measures until we can do the long-term fix next week.
And just to clarify, there is no gas leak. The gas has been turned off?
That is correct, and we provided space heaters for the classrooms.
Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you very much. We are now moving to Agenda Item B nine, Agenda Review and Adoption. Board seeing no adjustments to the agenda. The agenda is approved without objection. We are now moving to B ten, Approval Minutes, October the ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. Are there any corrections? Seeing none. The Minutes are now adopted without objection. Trustee Reckler, did you have something to say? No? We are now moving to consent items. Is there anything that anyone would like to pull off consent? Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Thank you. C five from ratified contracts, Trinity for Cada Volunteer Clinic Company, and C ten, contract for district-wide unarmed security guard services. That's all.
Anything else? Seeing none, the consent item is approved with the removal of, the pulling of Items C five and C ten. We are now headed to Item D on the agenda. We are at the superintendent's communication. Dr. Hurst, this is your item.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Can we pull up that item, please? For the superintendent report this evening, we actually have three portions. I have just a few updates. Then, we're going to turn it over to Ms. Seigler to introduce EAOP. They all have five minutes to a presentation. And then, we'll turn it over to Dr. Rogers-Ard, who will be doing a presentation fifteen minutes timeframe. And we're going to start off with a memoriam. The district would like to take time to recognize the contributions of members of the school community who've passed away. I regret to inform you that Ms. Deborah Britton, an English teacher at Helms Middle School, recently passed. Ms. Britton taught at Helms for the entire twenty-one years she's been at West Country Costa Unified School District. We appreciate her commitment to student excellence and achievement within the Helms Middle School community and within the district. We're asking that you join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. Next slide. We are so honored. I love to see the face. So honored to recognize our staff, and I've been doing this for a while now. And we want to recognize Melissa Payne, affectionately known also as Teacher Payne. And we ask that you stand and then come up so you can be recognized. But Melissa, Ms. Payne, has been in this position only for a short time. And I remember sitting down with her, asking her to stand in the gap, and she readily volunteered to be in this position and to work alongside with us on behalf of our students. And I'll say, Ms. Payne, you stepped into a very, very tough, tough position, assignment. And even though we know that it's a very tough assignment, you're handling it very well. But we do recognize that it has been tough, and you stepped into this position where it was really messy and ugly, and it's been like that for a bit. You've endured some very tough crowds, some very tough questions as well, but you've handled yourself with grace, with dignity. And I know it hasn't been as easy. And we've had some very intimate conversations amongst ourselves and the executive cabinet. And we just wanted to lift you up this evening because we see what you're going through, and we know that we want you to understand that we're supporting you, that we're standing by you. And we do appreciate you and your leadership. So, can you come forward and receive some flowers, ma'am? Thank you for all that you do.
All right, board, do you want to say anything? We're going to take a half a second. Want to say anything to Ms. Payne? I see trustee Phillips. Go ahead.
You have been doing this work long before you were in this position, and you have been doing it well, and you've been doing it with dignity, and you've always had a good spirit about you long before you were ever in the position that you're in now. So, thank you for everything that you do. I mean it from the bottom of my heart. I love your spirit. Keep it up.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Funny, been together for a little bit of time. It's been great to get to know you, and thank you so much for answering any questions that I have and educating me more on anything that I need to know. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Go ahead, Mr. Espinoza Jr., and we'll work our way around. Go ahead, Mr. Espinoza Jr.
Thank you, President. It's Ms. Foltz. I just wanted to say thank you for your service because that was one thing that you alongside the whole cabinet gave to me and Luke, when you gave us our little note cards to take notes for any people who have questions for us or to ask any other people questions. And I still think about that to this very day. So, I want to just echo that back to you. Thank you for your service alongside the cabinet and everyone that works with you and the people that you lead and just being a voice for all the students that are taking part in every campus in our district. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Trustee Christian, go ahead.
Yes, I want to thank you, Melissa, for all that you have done so far. You're always smiling, and you enjoy what you're doing, and you're committed. And so, I appreciate all the hard work you have done so far. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Clark Gonzalez-Hoy, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. I just want to thank you. Sometimes you make me want to like facilities issues. I say that because I had none before you started explaining to us how everything works. So, putting the joke aside, I just want to thank you because you truly come through the work. It's clear you are meant to be in this type of work, and you really are making a big difference. Um, the amount of work that you put into things behind the scenes, uh, we see it. So I just want to recognize that and say thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Teacher Payne, you are a treasure. I call you Teacher Payne because I think you should be a teacher. Every time that you talk about a facility, subject, or topic, or subtopic, or anything, I come out learning more than I came in. And that is the true heart of an educator, is to make someone better when they leave you than when you found them. And you have done that consistently over and over again. And I cannot thank you enough. From the top of the top of your head to the soles of your feet, you are a teacher. And just thank you for everything that you do, and you are highly valued and appreciated. I am complete. All right, Dr. Hurst, back to you.
Thank you, ma'am. We wanted to uh, bring awareness of our homelessness issue and WCCUSD amongst our children and youth. But also, this slide is also meant to share resources uh, with our community as well. So we do have a website at W C W W dot W C C U S D dot net backslash page backslash two forty six. And we have resources for our community for those who are homeless. We also want to share on our next slide that we have our fall break coming up, and that will begin Monday, November the twenty fifth through Friday, November the twenty ninth. The district office will be closed Thursday, November the twenty eighth through November twenty ninth. And we ask that you have a very safe break. We also hope that you enjoy your Thanksgiving Day and it is spent with the ones you love and care about. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Next slide. We also want to bring attention to uh, this week is American Education Week, celebrating everyone that supports our students, from classified to certificated to managers. We celebrate you this week. Next slide. And then also, um, I had the opportunity to be at Lupine Hills Elementary School, participating in a Ruby Bridges Walk. I know the board president was there as well. And we have some other pictures of other individuals throughout the district, but especially our students who participated in the Ruby Bridges Walk. And I know that I had the opportunity to talk about courage and fighting for justice and standing for what's right and truth as well. So we wanted to lift that up. Next slide. We also want to acknowledge Nigel Wies, uh, lead alto saxophonist and principal clarinet player in the El Cerrito Jazz Band. He's been selected as one of two alto saxophonists for the twenty twenty five California All-State Jazz Ensemble. Yes. It is a big deal. Um, Nigel was selected through a competitive audition among contestants from across the state to fill one of only eighteen spots in the band. So it is a big deal. We'll keep you posted on the date of the ensemble performance. And then um, director of band Keith Johnson. He said, I've been fortunate to see Nigel grow into the musician in person he is today. He had the right attitude, work ethic, and old soul when it came to playing jazz, and he became a superstar. So we celebrate Nigel. And then the next slide. We also want to congratulate Brittany McFay from El Cerrito High and Zoriah White from Deanza High for being selected as semifinalist for the prestigious role of student member on the California State Board of Education. Let's give them a round of applause. Every summer, the governor appoints the high school senior, one high school senior to the State Board of Education for a one year term. The student member serves as a regular voting member of the State Board of Education. So congratulations to both Zoriah and Bridget. And then finally, we always want to share with you our PAC, our parent advisory committees. And these are for your reading pleasure and the dates and times as well. And we're going to close this out. We're not sure if you want to go to questions now or go to EAOP. So we're going to um, introduce Ms. Sigler to introduce EAOP.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Hurst and Board. We are thrilled to welcome Nico Rojas and Gina Sechow, who are our UC Berkeley partners for EAOP. And I'd be remiss if we didn't note that Ms. Sechow is a Richmond High alumni and started her career as Deanza High School's College and Career Counselor. So when we say that they're friends to the district, they're good friends.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you all for inviting us back. Uh, once again, my name is Gina Sechow, and I work with UC Berkeley's Destination College Advising Corps and Early Academic Outreach Program. And I am the Assistant Director overseeing West Contra Costa.
And my name is Nico Rojas. Um, I serve as one of the co-directors for the program. Um, and I didn't go to West Contra Costa, but I went to East Contra Costa. Um, next slide, please. Our program's mission is to partner with schools and communities, organizations to increase college access and empower low income, first gen, and underrepresented high school students and families by placing highly trained recent college grads as full-time college advisors on our partner sites. Um, a little bit of an overview from our history, um, two slides, please. Um, our partnership started over twenty years ago, um, started at Deanza High School and Richmond High School um, to increase college-going culture across the district. Next slide. Um, in twenty fourteen, um, with the integration of Destination College Advising Corps, um, we introduced and expanded to all six of the comprehensive high schools within the district and introduced the College Advisor Fellows model to support and serve the students at a full-time capacity at the school sites.
Staffing structure comprises of one assistant director, myself, and six college advisor fellows. And as you all can see, we really do try our best to bring back uh, our community graduates to serve our high school students. So about four of my six advisors at our high schools are alumni from the district. Next slide. I play a really pivotal role in managing our partnership with WCCUSD, coordinating with schools and district leaders, leading professional development and ensuring program goals are met through data tracking and performance management. I also organize key events and mentor our college advisor fellows to ensure seamless program delivery and meaningful student impact. Our college advisor fellows provide personalized advising to their students, guiding them through college applications, financial aid, and scholarships, while also leading workshops on college and career readiness. They engage with the broader school community and families to build a college-going culture and track program data to measure and enhance our impact.
Next slide. So we're sharing a little bit of program activities from the last five years. Um, so since um, twenty nineteen, we provided um, over forty thousand one-on-one student interactions, supported the submissions of more than twenty-five thousand college applications, provided over one hundred and fifteen thousand interactions in group settings, um, and helps submit nearly five thousand financial aid applications. We've also hosted over um, one thousand five hundred um, events, such as college knowledge workshops, financial aid workshops, sessions on building student aspirations. Um, college-going culture along with other events aim to support our students and families um, on their journey to higher education.
Since twenty eighteen, DCAC and EAOP has brought a district-wide college and career night to WCCUSD community. We, when we first hosted the event back in twenty eighteen, we started with around forty colleges and universities to what we have had last month in October, where we had over seventy colleges and universities and employers um, at El Cerrito High School to engage our community. This past event garnered over five hundred and fifty families and student participation from twenty-two different middle and high schools in Contra Costa County. This past like two weeks ago, we had a Higher Ed Day, which is um, which is a traveling college fair that went to the three high schools in Richmond to bring the opportunity to the students where they were at. Um, Higher Ed Day is essentially designed to be a senior and junior-wide assembly. This single day allowed us to serve twelve hundred students from Deanza, Richmond, and Kennedy High School. And last but not least, I just wanted to highlight that at Kennedy High School, my college advisor and I have spearheaded the CTE Fair for the last two years, bringing twenty-five plus career and trade opportunities. And this was targeted for the whole school. So all students ninth through twelfth grade were invited to participate in this fair. From this year alone, September to November eighth, we've provided nearly four hundred students with one-on-one interactions, totaling six hundred plus one-on-one sessions, and serve thirteen hundred unique students in group sessions, providing over two thousand three hundred interactions in group sessions.
Um, we are not the only programs from um, UC Berkeley who are serving the district. And so we do have a university partnership and as a department, um, the Center for Educational Partnerships, um, provide um, professional development and opportunities for counselors and school site admin. Um, we also support the overall K through sixteen Bay Area collaborative and provide access to UC Compass, formerly known as TES, the Transcript Evaluation Service, um, through the um, UC Office of the President. Alongside our programs, um, we also have our sister programs, the Trio, um, Talent Search and Upward Bound Programs, as well as the CSAC CASO programs, um, serving uh, multiple middle and high schools as shown on the slide.
And we wanted to thank you all for your continued partnership and your investment in programs that serve our community and students like myself. Thank you.
EAOP, before you leave, hold on, let's make sure there's no questions from the board. Board, do you have any specific questions for EAOP? Seeing none, have a great night. Thank you. Thank you very much.
It is my privilege to introduce Dr. Rogers Ard, who I will say we are blessed to have her leading this work around anti-racism. Um, I consider her not just a colleague, but a friend and my sister as well. And she's going to be presenting um, the anti-racism work and timeline and more information for us. So we'll turn it over to Dr. Rogers Ard.
Thanks so much. Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Thank you. Because where I come from, when you say good evening, people respond. I'm super happy to be here again, presenting to the board. Um, I want to say before I get started, um, I really appreciate the work that we have done over the past year and a half within uh, WCCUSD, and I'm excited about what the future holds. Having said that, I'm also aware of our current national context. And in thinking about this presentation today, I am more committed than ever to the work of anti-racism in spite of what is happening on a national level. And so I want to begin today with a couple of questions. Next slide. Here are two questions that I would like the board to grapple with. Number one, what is acceptable racism across WCCUSD? Because there must be a level of that, because we continue to have racism as one of the main issues that our principals are dealing with and our adults. So I'm wondering, what's acceptable to us at WCCUSD? And then the second question is, why do we hate being called racist more than we hate racism? When I work with principals and when I work with folks across the district, there is a fear. I don't want to be called racist. I do that. That would be harmful. And yet we allow racism to happen in our schools. So is it because it's acceptable? Or is it because our fear of being called racist is greater than our ability to actually dismantle racist policies? Let's talk about it. Next slide. Uh, January of this year, there was a report that went out from CBS News, is racism a problem in America today? And you see the results there. Not everyone voted. Next slide. Anti-racism is the practice of actively identifying and opposing racism. The goal of anti-racism is to actively change policies, behaviors, and beliefs that perpetuate racist ideas and actions. Put simply, anti-racism is a push against racism. If you think about the question, what's an acceptable level of racism in WCCUSD? I feel like it must be acceptable because I'm not sure we're all on the same page for fighting against racism. And parenthetically, let me just add here that it saddens me when we talk about racism to hear that for many people, it's a us versus them mentality. If I could be specific, we all know that Latinx folks and Black folks are at the bottom two castes. And if you're not familiar with the caste system, I encourage us to read Isabel Wilkerson's Twenty Twenty Cast. But let's assume that we are familiar with it. There is no, that nothing happens when we fight against each other on the bottom two castes. Nothing happens. That's where crabs in a barrel came from. The reality is, anti-racism, if we look at the slide, is the practice of actively identifying and opposing racism. And when racism happens against newcomers, against immigrants, against um, folks who are Latinx, I'm saddened by that. I'm also saddened when racism happens against Black people. But the notion of someone over, one group over another, when the true peace is how we are fighting against racism for everyone, is where I would like to see this district. Next slide. The beauty of anti-racism is that you don't have to pretend to be free of racism to be an anti-racist. Anti-racism is the commitment to fight racism wherever you find it, including in yourself. And I guess, next slide, for me, my question for the board is, in what ways are you individually, actively fighting against racism? Or are we allowing racism to continue because maybe you don't feel like it's your fight? I'm pausing for dramatic effect. Next slide. So let's talk about what we've done, our current fight against racism. Next slide. In twenty-two, twenty-three, many African-American parents were very disturbed. Um, African-American students reported to the board that they've had some racialized incidents. The parents met to craft a plan of action. Next slide. Last year, Harvest Consulting was um, privileged to be able to look at student experiences, to work with site-based leaders, to work with central office staff, and to work with senior leaders and some board members. Next slide. We, meaning the people in this room, meaning mainly the board, we have to be part of ending racism. Strong stop. We have to be part of ending racism. And that requires us to do more than just believe in equality, but to learn and practice anti-racism. To that end, next slide. Here are some areas of impact for um, twenty-four, twenty-five that we're working on. The Anti-Racism Advisory Group, which is a cross-section of um, central office and principals and students who are advising us on the work that we need to hold. Leadership Accountability with the Superintendent and Board President in um, bi-weekly meetings. Um, wanting to get in front of boards for uh, training. Extended Cabinet Training every month. And our Student Summit, which is upcoming, I'm going to talk about in a moment parenthetically. Next slide. But my main focus area for twenty-four, twenty-five, and thanks to uh, the Cow Foundation for funding this work, is this notion around immersive schools. So we have sixteen schools with which we are meeting bi-weekly to really focus on having them identify a racist uh, policy practice or procedure that they want to disrupt this year. We are, the point about being immersive is that we are providing support, we're providing wraparound, um, uh, support for our principals, we're providing training for um, site teams. But I think most importantly, we're holding our principals accountable to say, there are problems at our school sites, and we want our principals to and we want our principals to take the lead in disrupting those problems. I am pleased that the conversation is robust. I also want to thank our EDs and Ed Services for also supporting this work, because really, this is where our students will feel anything that we're doing, right, is at the school site. To that end, next slide, there are a couple of upcoming events I wanted to let you know. And now I need to turn this so I can see it. There's our immersive schools cohort meetings, which are happening on December 3rd and 17th. Our High School Students of Color Anti-Racism Summit from 9:30 to noon on the 11th of December. We'll be meeting again with Executive Cabinet on December 9th. And also, our Anti-Racism Advisory Group Meeting, 3:00 to 4:30. I invite any board member who would like to sit in, who would like to hear the work that's happening, please reach out to me. Please contact me, contact the superintendent, contact the board president. This is the work in which we need to be engaging. And I would thoroughly appreciate your participation. So, next slide. So I'm going to come back to my essential question tonight. In what ways are you actively fighting against racism? You individually. What are the key concrete strategies that you're using to actively fight against racism? Next slide. Because you may not have the answer, I would like to provide some options. Might I do that? Okay, thank you. I've said this for the last year. Every board member needs to read Punished for Dreaming. Punished for Dreaming talks about school boards and policies that can be enacted, that have happened elsewhere, and how when we don't enact those policies, how racism continues. It is a critical book for anyone who is interested in doing this work. Also, item one, I strongly urge you to learn to fight racism wherever you see or hear about it, even if it's within yourself. This is the, this is a democratic imperative, especially given where we are in our nation's history. We all have to be fighters against it. It is not enough to be inactive or to be a passive observer. This is the work that we must hold if we're going to leave a better nation for our children. Number two, board members, I encourage you to do what we asked every principal and every cabinet member to do, to share your anti-racism commitment and leadership stance at board meetings. I think that your constituents would want to know where you are in your fight against racism. The superintendent has shared his stance, cabinet members have shared their stance, and we've asked every principal to share theirs. The only thing missing is our board members. I strongly urge that. And if you need help or assistance, please let me know. Number three, I suggest that you, as board members, learn about whiteness and its legacy in this country. And then ask yourself, in what ways do I uphold whiteness and work to disrupt those policies and practices? It is imperative that we not see each other as the enemy, but that we really name the enemy, which is institutionalized white supremacy. And then finally, board members, I need you to work together, not against each other. This is not a fight against the bottom two castes. This is about creating the conditions so all students can learn and thrive as we disrupt racist policies. So once again, next slide. The question I want to leave you with today is, in what ways are you actively fighting against racism? What questions have I raised for you?
Board, are there any questions for Dr. Rogers Ard? Dr. Rogers Ard, after we have read Punished for Dreaming, which we've all should have read by now, what, and you had the steps, next steps that we have, what's the next book that you've suggested we all read as a board?
I actually am working on a curated book list, given where we are with our nation. It's not going to be enough for us to, dare I say, read books that perhaps don't speak to the resistance that we are about to encounter. So after Punished for Dreaming, I am currently working on a list. What I will say is, right now, I need the board to understand policy like never before. We are in a very, very unique position in our nation's history. And if we don't understand policy and how policies work to both undermine folks and also to lift up other folks, then we're not going to be able to support our babies. And as I saw the beautiful example of our babies today participating in the process, I couldn't help but think, who is creating space for those babies? Who is making sure that all of our students, particularly our students of color, are being held in a way that they need to be held while we know there are going to be some very, very serious challenges? So I will get back to you on that curated list.
Thank you so very much. Clark Gonzalez-Loy, question?
Thank you, President. Thank you, Dr. Rogers Ard, for your presentation. I admire your work very much. I would like to ask you, from a lens, I'm the chair of the Governance Committee, so all new policies or revisions to policies come through that committee. And as we question or look at new policies or resolutions that come through, what would be your recommendation for us to question? And for us to think through with an anti-racist lens?
I mean, the easy questions I see you're asking today. The first thing I want to say is, I thought about the book, It's Cast by Isabel Wilkerson, 2020. You know, I think that when I look at policies of other school districts and I think about what's happening in our nation, the number one thing that I would love for us to think about is what are the policies that are going to keep our babies safe? We know what's about to come down the pike, right? And so, in what ways can we create policies so our babies, who are specifically in the bottom two castes, can be safe while they're at school? And that's something that we need to be really interrogating. At our school sites, though, what I'm hearing from principals is this notion of slurs. And I know we're getting ready to talk about an anti-slur policy. It's going to be more than just the policy. It's going to be, how do we implement the policy? What I hear from elementary school principals is they spend an inordinate amount of time dealing with racialized slurs. Again, against Black folks, against Latinx folks, against Asian folks, sometimes in between those castes and against each other. And the thing is, is if school isn't safe, right, then we are not doing our job. I want to be able to send my unborn grandchild to a school and know that that child can be safe. So the first thing is, let's look at how we can keep our babies safe from what's happening outside in our, in our country. The second thing is, we've got to go in hard around slurs. And what does it mean to raise a group of children who won't do the things that we're watching adults do in our current climate, right? It occurs to me that every single person who was about to lead our nation went to somebody's school. And yet, they did not learn that we don't just stand up and call people very, very horrible words and names. That's like something I learned in kindergarten, right? We are, we're teaching to be safe. We're teaching that we are polite. We're teaching our babies to say please and thank you. When is it okay to call someone out of their name? It's just not. So if we are not holding our schools as the line of defense there, can we really say our babies are safe? Specifically from racialized harm. And then the third one, I know you're like, I should never have asked her this question. The third one is, for me, I want to know that our leaders are okay if someone says to them, oh, are you calling me racist? And our leaders say, no, but your policy, your behavior, the things that you are doing in terms of sending some children out and not others, all of those things lead me to believe that this is racist behavior. Somehow, we have to have leadership, and that would be including all of you, that says, no, we're going to support you when you disrupt those. And then final policy, again, don't ask me a question you don't want to answer too. A final policy for me is, how do we treat each other as adults? So I know I've been talking about our babies, because that's my first love. But what I'm really actually concerned about is how are we modeling for our babies? Some of our behavior to each other as adults should not be happening in school settings. And I think that we have to hold that. We are the first line of defense. I hope that was helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Dr. Rogers Ard, I do have one more question. Could you define, for the board and for the community listening, what is racialized harm?
Again, the easy questions tonight, right? So for me, I define racialized harm as the impact that having a racially harmful experience has on an individual. So if I am walking out the door tonight and someone calls me a slur, maybe I can handle that at my age, because I've been through some things. But a baby, fourth grade, third grade, should not have to put those defenses up. So that causes harm. And when it happens, and there doesn't seem to be any appropriate discourse so that we can reverse that, the harm could lead to other, other long-lasting issues that actually leads to trauma. So let me just say that, over time, racialized harm becomes racialized trauma. If we don't say to little girl, I know that you experienced this, and here's what happened, and this is what's going to happen to that person, and we are not going to allow that to happen in our schools, that might mitigate some of the harm. But what we know from high schoolers is that they've been dealing with incidents that are racialized since they started school. And this is not, I want to be clear, this is not something that just WCCUSD deals with, right? I'm talking about, this is what happens in education. But when we've got an over-representation of Black boys and Brown boys and special ed, and people see them differently, and so when they grow up, they are taking on this notion that they are othered, that's racialized harm. And if left unchecked, racialized harm becomes racialized trauma. I want to end with this. Next slide. Listen, board members, cabinet, folks listening. Kendi says, one either allows racial inequities to persevere as a racist or confront racial inequities as an anti-racist. There is no in-between safe space of not racist. And another way that he says it in another quote is, there's no neutrality in the racism struggle. I implore you to get on the, like, get on the mark. Let's go. It is not enough to sit back and watch racism. I want to implore you, right now, it's time to really take a stand and decide, am I going to fight against racism, or am I going to let racism continue? I thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Board, can we give Dr. Rogers Ard a hand? Dr. Hurst, I'll turn it right back over to you. Thank you, Dr. Rogers Ard. It was wonderful. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. That concludes all of the superintendent report. I'll turn it back over to you for any questions.
Board, any questions on the entire report? Seeing none, we are now moving on to our action item. Our action item is E1, AB 1200, Public Disclosure of Collective Bargaining Agreement. Dr. Moses, this is your item.
Thank you, President. Smith Folds. Good evening, board trustees, Dr. Hurst. This evening, we're bringing before you, for public disclosure, the AB 1200 Collective Bargaining Agreement. For Adult School Teachers United, our district's negotiating team and this labor unit has come to a settlement agreement, and we're asking this evening for you to approve the agreement and the AB 1200. Pursuant to Government Code, Section 3547.5, prior to a public school employer entering into a written agreement with a representative covering matters in the scope of representation, we must bring this forward as a public disclosure item. Prior to disclosure, we are required to report to the Contra Costa County Office of Education the terms of the agreement, at which point the county office business professionals will evaluate and render a decision as to whether or not they believe the district can afford to enter into this agreement. On November 1st, our district received a letter from the Contra Costa County Office of Education agreeing that we can indeed afford this negotiated agreement. So we bring this letter and this negotiated agreement before you tonight, and we recommend approval of this MOU in order to support an increased salary negotiation for this unit.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Staff, do you have any public comment?
We have no public comment.
Thank you. Board, do you have any questions? Trustee Reckler, go ahead. We're going to do three questions and two-minute public, or two-minute board comment. Go ahead, Trustee Reckler.
Great, thank you. And congratulations. This has been a long time coming. How is the raise being paid for?
Thank you for the question. The raise is being paid for with the funds that are set aside for the adult school only. We are using their fund dedicated to only their services and staffing in order to cover this. This will not impact the general fund.
It is my understanding, though, that it is a reserve, right? And that it comes from their reserves?
Yes. So within their fund, we have been trying to achieve a contract with this unit for the last four or five years, I believe. Because of that, we have been setting aside money, knowing that the settlement would come eventually. So there are, there are reserves in their fund in order to cover this retro agreement. It does retro back to 2021. Or, let me see. It retros back to 2020, 2021 school year.
And then, I, I just want to be clear, I think that there could be a point in the future where that, where there may have to be a reevaluation. Is that correct as well?
Yeah, actually, as with any agreement, we have to ensure that we can, each time we adopt a budget, afford the agreement. We do anticipate that this agreement will be able to, the budget will sustain this agreement. However, we do have the ability, within the adult school structure, to make adjustments as needed should the, should their fund be impacted unexpectedly.
Thank you. I don't have anything else.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, board, is there a motion? Clark Gonzalez-Loy?
Thank you. Board President, I move that we approve the MOU and the, the MOU with adult school and the AB 1200.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so very much. Board, are there any comments? Wait for the two-minute clock. Trustee Reckler, and then go ahead.
My comment will take less than you. So again, I just wanted to say, congratulations. This really was a long time coming, and I'm really happy to see it, see it achieved. Can you not hear me? You can't? Oh, you can. Okay. She can't. She's looking like she can't.
My apologies. The, the sound over here sounds really muffled, so we can't make out the words.
Okay. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
And that's all.
All right.
Any other comment? Trustee Phillips, go ahead.
Thank you very much. The relationship between the district and this unit has been very adversarial. And it's been like that for quite some time. I'm glad that a agreement was able to be reached. But what I would hope, not what I would hope, what I hope happens, not just with this unit, but with really all not just with this unit, but with really all of the units, is that we're able to move to interest-based bargaining. I think it's in the best interest of everyone. I've been talking about it for some years now. It hasn't happened. Maybe, you know, do the, don't get to the mountaintop with your thing, but get there. I hope that this district gets there. I think that we spend a lot of time fighting. Dr. Rogers Art just talked about infighting, but there's all kind of different fights and whatnot going on around this district at really any given time. And labor disharmony is one of them. That doesn't mean, you know, that I think the district should do any and everything that organized labor says, and I think people know that. But also, I don't think that organized labor should be mistreated. And I just think that if we're able to get to a space where we're able to, and this, I know it sounds like kumbaya, but it's not because other districts do it. And if we're able to get to a space where we're able to stand with one another and kind of work from the same place toward a mutual goal, I think we will be better off. So to the rest of the board members, those of you who will be here and staff, I hope that you're able to get to that interest-based bargaining.
Any other comments from the board? Dr. Moses, I just want to thank you. And Dr. Johnson, thank you and your staff for all that you do. Anyone I left out, please charge my mind, not my heart. Thank you for the hard work that you did to make this happen. It is a long time coming. And, you know, friend, like everything, it takes a black woman to push it over the line. So thank you so much for all that you do, and I really, really appreciate it. And now we are moving on to the vote. All right, here we go. Trustee Wilson, your vote, please.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler, your vote?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, your vote?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you. Congratulations again. All right, we are now moving to item F, Discussion Items and Reports. We have one discussion item. It is Student Achievement Data. Ms. Catherine, this is your item.
Thank you so much. I'll wait till we pull up our deck. Amazing. So good evening, community and board members. Our teaching and learning team are excited to have the opportunity to share our recently published state-level student achievement data with you this evening. We aim to transparently share the student data for all students, to disaggregate the data for our student groups, to create a shared understanding of our working theory of action and share our central strategy, and close out with a spotlight of two schools that are demonstrating some promising growth. Next slide. As a district, we lean into the use of data through the equity-centered framework model presented by Shane Safir and Dr. Jamila Dugan, as published in the book that's very popular called Street Data. Their framework really helps us to visualize and talk about the different levels of data. Level one data is satellite data. This is large-grain-sized data that includes our class, cast results, also known as our S-BAC results, attendance patterns, graduation rates, and this tells us a really important but incomplete story. Satellite data can illuminate big performance trends and point towards student groups that are in need, but it also tends to be lagging, falling into educators' hands long after they've lost the utility to inform instructional decisions. And this is also the data that is publicly available for our educational partners and by which we are currently evaluated by the county and the state. So it is very important data still. Level two map data is medium-size grain data, and it hovers a little bit closer to the ground, and it provides us a GPS of learning trends and gaps that we see in school communities. Map data can include, for example, reading-running records assessments. They might include student perception data from school-wide surveys. It could be our eye-ready interim assessment, grades, credit recovery data. And this data paints a slightly richer picture and points us towards a more focused direction to guide student achievement. And by contrast, the last level is called Level Three Data, and this is what we call a street data. This takes us all the way down to the ground, and this is where we get to listen to the voices and the experiences of students, staff, and families. This is where we want to live because it provides us with that real-time leading indicators of the work that's actually happening in schools and in our classrooms. So for example, street data can be classroom-level data that principals are in classrooms observing and giving teacher feedback. It could be student writing samples, exit tickets. And this is the most actionable data that supports student learning because it enables rapid feedback loops to be able to support instruction the very next day. So all that to say that all levels of data are really important. And as a district team, we start at the top and we move down and go back to the top to really guide our decisions. And today, we're going to have the opportunity to engage with Level One data, our most recently available S-BAC data scores for both ELA and FAMU. And so to present our data, I'd love to turn it over to Dr. Huey, our Director of Research and Reporting. Next slide.
Thank you, Mrs. Akostova-Praskas, and good evening, board, staff, and members of the public. We're going to start tonight by taking a look at the statewide data from our latest administration of the California Assessment of the Student Performance and Progress. Now, these are scores from spring of 2024, the testing administration. And my charge today is to walk us through a high-level overview of how our students in WCCUSD performed on last spring's statewide summit of assessment. Tonight, we'll be looking at the big-picture view of the whole district. And I know that that means that there are some people, like me, who love to dive into data, and we may not be able to answer all of your questions this evening. But for you, I just wanted to let you know, to give you a couple of tips. All of the data that we're presenting tonight are publicly available. If you look at the lower-left-hand side of the screen in gray, you can see that the links, the public links to the state dashboard are there so that you can see and find these data, and you can further dig into the data to your heart's content in different ways than we're able to share with you with our limited time tonight. So for tonight, let's start with an orientation on how to read the figures that we will be presenting. So the circle figures that you see on the screen in front of you represent all WCCUSD students who took each indicated test in 2024. So on the left, you see the figure for English Language Arts, and on the right, you see the figure for Mathematics. In each of the circle figures, you'll see that there are multiple colors. The green portion of the circle represents the students who met the standard for the test. Blue represents the students who exceeded the standard. Yellow, and I will admit, I have been told by some people that that yellow looks kind of green, but the state calls it yellow, so we're calling it yellow for purposes of, of just differentiation. That represents the students who were almost meeting that standard in that category. And the orange represents the students who unfortunately did not meet the standard. The large text in the middle of the circle indicates the combined percentage of students who either met or exceeded the standard for the test. And again, this is in spring of 2024. Additionally, you'll see that there is a number in pink at the bottom of each figure, of each circle figure. That number in pink, that's representing the change from year to year. So from the previous year, so that would be spring of 2023, to spring of 2024. And it'll either be a positive number or a negative number. Something to note here, so this slide is all of, this is the statewide data. This is what we started with. Something to note here before we dig into our district-wide data is that fewer than half of students in California statewide are meeting proficiency in English Language Arts, and fewer than 40% of students statewide are meeting proficiency in Mathematics. However, it's also true that we are seeing some slight improvement in both areas statewide. We can move to the next slide. And there we go. So looking at all of the students for the district, just like in the statewide data, we're seeing some incremental increases from year to year for students in West Contra Costa. We do want to note that year to year, we did see that there was an increase from spring of '23 to spring of '24 for WCCUSD students that is just slightly higher than the growth rate for students statewide. And while fewer than half of the students in California are meeting standards in English Language Arts or Mathematics statewide, it is also true that our numbers in West Contra Costa Unified School District are behind those of the state average. At this point, we do want to reemphasize that the large number in the center of each figure represents the percentage of all students meeting or exceeding standard across the district. And it's important to highlight that seven of our elementary schools and six secondary schools did have a larger percentage of students meeting or exceeding standards than did those statewide in English Language Arts. And 11 of our West Contra Costa Unified Elementary Schools and two of our secondary schools had a larger percentage of students meeting or exceeding standards than did those students statewide in math. So next, we'll look at student performance by different student groups, and we can move to the next slide. So we can see that there were a larger percentage of the 1,582 students tested. These are students with, students with disabilities who were tested in the spring of '24 versus the spring of '23 who actually met standard. Next slide. So looking at the number, likewise, looking at the number of students who are in the socio-economically disadvantaged group, we can see that we saw some increase in the percentage of the 8,451 tested students who were socio-economically disadvantaged and met or exceeded the standard. Next slide. A larger percentage of the 3,699 tested English learners in West Contra Costa Unified met the standard in both English Language Arts and Math in spring of '24 than did those in the previous year. Next slide. And here we note that we do have a slightly smaller percentage of the 1,443 African-American students who tested in the spring of '24 who met standard in English Language Arts than in spring of '23. And we see that we did not lose ground in Mathematics. Instead, we are seeing that there are more students meeting standard in '24 than in '23. Next slide. In the spring of '24, we see that 625 Filipino students, that of the 625 Filipino students tested, we see that a higher percentage experienced higher scores in both English Language Arts and Mathematics than they did in 2023. Next slide. For our Hispanic and Latino students, we see that of the 6,756 Hispanic or Latino students who tested in the spring of '24, we see that we did have students testing lower in '24 than they did in '23 in English Language Arts, and at the same time, they scored higher in Mathematics. Next slide. We also see that of the 26 students identifying as American Indian or Alaska Native, that those students did score lower in both English Language Arts and Mathematics in the spring of '24 than they did in the spring of '23. Next slide. Here we can see that we do have a higher percentage of our 1,362 tested students who are in the Asian category, who performed better in both English Language Arts and Mathematics than did the same group of students in spring of '23. Next slide. Of the 70 students, of the 70 students identifying as native Hawaiian or Pacific Islander who tested in 2024, more students met standard in English Language Arts than they did in '23, while the opposite was true of Mathematics. Next slide. Of the 1,259 white students tested in '24, we see that in both math and English, more students met standard than they did in the previous year. Next slide. Of the 832 students identifying as two or more races in spring of '24, a larger percentage of those students scored higher in both ELA and Math than did those in the same group in the previous year. Next slide. Unfortunately, the opposite is true of the 21 foster students who took the CASC test during the spring of '24, where we saw fewer students meet standard in both ELA and Mathematics. Next slide. Lastly, we saw a larger percentage of the 284 homeless students who took the CASC test in spring of '24 score in the met or exceeded standard range for both ELA and Math than did the same group of students in spring of '23. Next slide. So thank you, board, for the opportunity to share student performance data with you this evening. I'm now very pleased to turn it back over to Mrs. Akostova-Praskas to continue the discussion.
Thank you so much, Dr. Huey. So we wanted to provide a view of the achievement level distribution across grade levels, starting with third grade. So you can go ahead and click on to the next slide. As you can see, the results are relatively consistent across the grades, with 11th graders performing slightly better than our younger students. And this is about 33% of 11th graders meeting at or exceeding in ELA. Next slide. We see a very different picture when we take a look at our mathematics results, and it's actually flipped. So we're seeing our youngest students noticeably outperforming our older students with about 33% of third graders meeting or exceeding in Mathematics. Next slide. We also believe that it's really important to look beyond West Contra Costa Unified School District to study the results of nearby districts and within Contra Costa, both to conceptualize our results, but also to learn from promising practices around us, particularly in districts that serve similar student populations than ours. So we can go ahead and go on to the next slide. So when you take a look at West Contra Costa in ELA compared to Pittsburgh Unified and Antioch Unified, which are both smaller districts but still located in Contra Costa County. As a reminder, West Contra Costa Unified School District has about 26,000 students in 2023. We have 56 schools, and 32% of our students are English language learners. 63% are free or reduced lunch. Pittsburgh Unified only serves about 11,000 students. They have 13 schools. They serve about similar 25% of ELs, 78% of students eligible to receive a free or reduced lunch. Antioch has about 25 schools, serving about 15,000 students with 20% ELs and 73% free and reduced. And you can see that while we are bigger and serve a higher percentage of English learners, we are performing at a higher percentage of met and exceeded in ELA. Next slide. When compared to larger urban settings like Oakland Unified District, which serves about 84 schools and 34,000 students, at 33% English learners, 80% free and reduced lunch, and then compared to San Francisco Unified with 113 schools and 49,000 students, 24% of which are ELs and 52% twenty-four percent of which are ELs and fifty-two percent which are free and reduced, we're performing at about the same rate of Oakland Unified, and you can see that San Francisco is outperforming us. Next slide. Next slide. And so these are the results for Mathematics. Next slide. Thank you. So we recognize that we have a lot of work to do, and we want to make sure that we provide a high-quality education that our students deserve and that that actually shows in our student achievement scores. And so we believe that part of this process is also a need to highlight the bright spots in our data. And so we're going to spend a little bit of time doing that. Next slide. Data growth over three percent represents a significant amount of growth over a single year when looking at CASC results. This is evidence of very intentional work towards improvement. This is also why this is part of our LCAP Goal Three for Student Achievement, and we are expecting that we're going to see a three percent growth over the next three years for a total of nine percent. And while that may not seem very high, it's actually very difficult to do. And it's rigorous, but we believe it's attainable. So we're really excited to share that district-wide in ELA, we're seeing third-grader students in ELA increasing by three point five four percent from spring of twenty-two to spring of twenty-four. Fifth graders in ELA increased by three point four four percent, and our eighth graders with disabilities increased by five point zero one percent from spring twenty-two to twenty-four. Next slide. In Mathematics, we saw third graders again increasing by three point three percent, seventh graders increasing by three point nine seven, and math scores for our seventh-grade students who are African American students increased by five point six six. And this is really promising data for us. Next slide. We also want to take a moment to highlight the individual schools that increased their percentage of met or exceeded by more than three percent in ELA. As you can see in this map, our growth spans across the district. We have two big standouts in the data, and they're actually here with us tonight. Nystrom Elementary School with a big seven point nine one percent growth and Shannon Elementary School with ten point seven five percent growth. Later tonight, you're going to get to hear from these principals, and they're going to talk about the very intentional work that led to these results. Next slide. So here you can see the schools that increased their percentage of met or exceeded by more than three percent in math. And again, we're seeing that this growth is happening across the district. And I just want to take a moment to thank Dr. Huey for her work and actually going out to every single one of these school sites to speak to the site leaders and learn about their strategies that led to these growths. And it's these conversations that are informing our practice. And this data story that she's brought back, next slide, has really supported our strategic planning and has informed us in the creation of the theory of action that's going to be guiding how we're going to disrupt the data. Next slide. So we believe that if we invest in building the capacity of our instructional leaders, this is our principals, to be data-driven and use a common tool for classroom observations to ensure that that first-time instruction, tier one, is rigorous, then we're going to be able to provide teachers with that timely instructional feedback and information that they need to differentiate and intervene for our students so that we can build the capacity of those educators and maximize student growth. And so tonight, I'm really excited to be able to turn it over to my team to speak about this very strategic approach that we're taking to improve achievement. And so first, we're going to turn it over for Mathematics to Dr. Gabe Chilcott, who is our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment over STEM Programs.
Thank you, Mr. Acosta Verpreskus. And thank you, Board, for having me here to be able to talk about some of our great work within Mathematics in West Contra Costa. Next slide, please. Perfect. But talk first about our vision and mission statements for Mathematics in West Contra Costa. The vision is that all learners know, use, and enjoy Mathematics. The mission statement is that all learners will be provided instruction that is grade-level, mathematically rigorous, student-centered, language-rich, growth mindset-focused, and data-driven. And we really ground our work in this vision and mission and the choices that we make in how we marshal our resources to support mathematical instruction across the district. And this last clause, "data-driven," has been the focus of the last couple of collaborations during the principal meetings and also the APVP meetings. Our data warehouse, EduClima, is a great resource for looking at data and then diving down to deeper levels. During the October meetings, I trained leaders on how to drill down in their data to find a list of foster students at their site. They then use the Instructional Practice Guide, which is our common observation tool, to observe the student in their ELA and math classes. Then we led a protocol where leaders reflected on their observation in the math class before our math coordinator focused on some actions that principals can take to improve math instruction in our district. And this refers back to the Street Data Framework that Mr. Acosta Verpreskus opened up this portion of the of the evening with in how we look at different levels of data and really try to get down to the student experience to understand what's happening in our classrooms to be able to improve student outcomes. Next slide, please. These, oh, is there one before that? Thank you. These are the math teacher practices, these five practices that we use to guide our work in Mathematics. These are all important practices, and three of them are highly correlated to our focal indicators on the IPG or Instructional Practice Guide. Those would be rigorous, high-quality, grade-level content, checking for understanding, and student discourse. So those are our focal areas when we observe and do our walkthroughs in the classroom to look at those three specific mathematical practices. We look at all of them, but those are the focal areas. And as the dataset is getting larger and larger from the walkthroughs that our leaders are doing on campus using the IPG, it really gives us a window into what's happening in all our schools across the district. And like Mr. Acosta Verpreskus mentioned, the theory of action, we believe that our primary focus is strong tier-one instruction. And we focus on all levels of instruction, but that's really where a lot of our our time is spent using the IPG. Next slide, please. Our first focal area from both the West Contra Costa Math Teacher Practices and the IPG is rigorous, high-quality curriculum. DESMO, which is based on illustrative mathematics, is one such curriculum. We chose this specific program for a number of reasons. But one is the focus on language routines and research that indicates that this approach helps English Language learners and other historically under-supported subgroups, which we believe will help close the opportunity gap. We secured a Gates grant to help create the implementation plan and then continued with coaching support to help us support the use of the curriculum. This has all been opt-in and is now in use in thirty-three schools across the district. So we're very excited in this ground-up implementation of a high-quality curriculum. Next slide, please. ZERN is our central support for accelerating math achievement in elementary schools. Before the ZERN implementation, sites were expected to choose their own interventions and acceleration supplement. ZERN is rated very highly and well-aligned to the three largest curricula being used for math instruction across the district, which are Lessor of Mathematics, MyMath, and Engage New York. It's still highly aligned if we are able to adopt Eureka Squared in the fall as intended and that was selected by the pilot process last year for our elementary math adoption if the funds are secured. ZERN school leads hold the work at thirty-two school sites. That's nearly triple the number from last school year. These are classroom teachers who analyze data, support colleagues, and celebrate progress every week. The ZERN school leads meet is a community of practice every five to six weeks to discuss successes, challenges, and next steps in their leadership journey. We are excited to have ZERN as a means to help unify all schools with a similar math purpose. Next slide, please. The instructional, uh, sorry, the Instructional Practice Guide is our common observational tool. Through our walkthroughs gathering data, the math team is aligned around four key focal areas. And that would be 1A, the goal of each lesson reflects mathematics within grade-level standards. 2C, the teacher deliberately checks for understanding to surface misconceptions and opportunities for growth to provide feedback to students. 3A, students do the majority of the work of the lesson by working with and practicing grade-level problems and exercises. And 3D, students talk and ask questions about each other's thinking in order to clarify or improve their own mathematical understanding. And you'll notice, as I referenced when I was talking about the mathematical practices, how well-aligned these are to those research-based mathematical practices that we've had for a few years. In addition, these focal areas were chosen through the data that was provided from our walkthroughs across the district at the areas that we really needed to highlight and to to marshal our support around to improve outcomes for our students. And with that, I am going to say thank you and pass it to Sanji Bell, our Literacy Director.
Thank you so much, Dr. Chilcott. So yes, we welcome to the podium our Director of Curriculum and Instruction and Assessment over ELA, Director Sanji Bell.
Thank you. And good evening, members of the Board and our community and our colleagues and Ms. Acosta Verpreskus. My name is Sanji Bell, and I'm here to present for ELA and Literacy. Next slide. Our department is committed to empowering the educational facilitators who play a crucial role in nurturing intellectual curiosity among our students. By fostering a deep passion for reading, writing, and critical thinking, we aim to enrich learning environments that inspire lifelong learners. Next slide. I think you're already there. Let's go back one. Perfect. Our work is grounded in Scarborough's rope, which is a useful framework for understanding reading development. It illustrates how two strands, word recognition and language comprehension, combine to create proficient readers. Word recognition involves skills like decoding and quickly identifying words, including phonemic awareness and sight word recognition. As students become more fluent in these skills, they can focus on the on understanding the text. Language comprehension refers to the ability to interpret language, including vocabulary knowledge and background information. Strong comprehension helps students grasp meaning and engage critically with what they read. The rope metaphor shows us that these strands strengthen. They enhance overall reading ability, and supporting both strands is essential. Next slide. Where we make impact is through supporting instruction through curriculum agnostic strategies. These strategies are designed to be flexible and applicable through various curricula, allowing us to effectively support our curriculum diversity and academic diversity of all of our students. Driven by what our data tells us, strategies are employed which are universally beneficial for all learners. Next slide. How we support the work. In support of curriculum agnostic strategies and the other side of the rope, we are excited to announce that West Contra Costa Unified School District has partnered with Contra Costa County Office of Education and Project Arise. Project Arise provides evidence-based resources and support to educators across the state of California, creating a thriving ecosystem of inclusive, asset-based literacy learning for all students. Approximately two hundred teachers from West Contra Costa, from grades kinder to twelfth, have participated in eleven hours of module trainings that cover instructional strategies seeped in language comprehension. Topics include making sense of complex text, building knowledge and vocabulary through text, evidence-based discussion and writing and goal-setting and action planning, which are directly connected to the language comprehension side of the rope. Next slide. These are our Tier Two offerings. In conjunction with our curriculum agnostic strategies, our department provides professional development and support for our tier-one instruction. Units of Study is our adopted curriculum for elementary, where we have supported Writer's Workshop. This workshop typically guides our students through the entire writing process, from brainstorming and drafting to revising and publishing. Study Sync is an educational platform focused on the English Language Arts for middle-school students and high-school students in both ninth and tenth grade. It provides a range of resources, including engaging lessons, texts, and assessments that align with state standards. The platform features interactive tools that promote collaboration and critical thinking, allowing students to annotate text and participate in discussions. Expository Reading and Writing Curriculum, otherwise known as ERWC, is the integration of integrated reading and writing processes along with rhetorical, inquiry-based approaches that foster critical thinking and engagement through a focus on the text. Next slide. Here we have our Tier Two intervention offerings. We offer SIPs, which we are, you're mostly familiar with, which is our systematic instruction. It stands for, I'm sorry, systematic instruction of phonological, it would help if I could read, right? Phonological awareness, phonics, and sight words. It's evidence-based intervention programs designed to help students, particularly those struggling with reading fundamentally with foundational skills, foundational literacy skills. Next, for our assessment, we have I Ready, which is our educational program designed to provide personalized learning in reading and mathematics for students kindergarten through eighth grade. It combines diagnostic assessments with interactive lessons to tailor instruction to each student's needs. And then our latest is CSAW, which is a supplemental curriculum that reinforces core subjects and beyond. It provides teachers everything they need to meet students where they are academically. And it's a powerful platform for students with diverse learning needs. Next slide. So as you've heard my colleagues mention, our Instructional Practice Guide is a tool that we use for walkthroughs. This is our focus for the IPG is Core Action Two, and more specifically, Core Action Two-B, which partners with our work in Language Arts Comprehension and the new work that we're embarking upon with Project Arise. Two-B, questions, text, questions and tasks required students to use evidence from the text to demonstrate understanding and to support their ideas about the text. These ideas express through written and oral responses, which is where much of our work currently grounds. Thank you for listening, and I'll turn it back over to Mrs. Acosta Verpreskus.
Thank you so much, Director Bell. Next slide. So we wanted to also provide our community with resources to be able to both access these public results. Next slide. So Dr. Huey mentioned exactly where we can find those. Those are live links available on our board agenda. But we also have added resources for families to be able to understand the assessment schedule that we're on, so you know exactly when your student's going to be tested, to understand your student's score report, because it is a bit difficult to understand, to understand what it means and what you can do to help your student at home, but also how you can talk to your teacher and/or school principal about those results. And just so everybody knows, you can access your student's score report via Power School, and that is a live link that can take you to directions for how to do so. Next slide. Okay, so now for the good stuff. We are very excited to have two of our amazing site leaders here with us today to talk about their work. And so I'd love to invite up to the podium Shannon Elementary School Principal, Principal Jen Gulick. If you could please hit the next slide. Yes, and let's give her a round of applause.
Thank you. Before I begin, I don't know how you guys do this. It is way past my bedtime. But, good evening, Board. Good evening, Board members and the West Contra Costa community. My name's Jennifer Gulick, and I'm the proud principal of Shannon Elementary. I'd like to begin by thanking you for this opportunity to share and celebrate the hard work of our students, teachers, and the entire Shannon community. and the entire Shannon community in making strides in mathematic achievement. Next slide. At Shannon Elementary, our mission is to foster a school environment that motivates students to take ownership of both their academic and social emotional growth. We empower our teachers with the autonomy to direct their professional development and actively involve parents as leaders and supports in our learning community. Our vision is to ensure that all students thrive academically, personally, and socially, that teachers excel in instruction and mentor student well-being, and that parents are integral to our learning community. Next slide. We've been using the iReady benchmark for kindergarten through sixth grade over the past three years. In 22, 23, and 23, 24 school years, we also introduced the iReady My Path for both reading and math, providing individualized learning paths tailored to each student's academic level based on their benchmark results. Last school year, 90% of our teachers used My Math, the district-adopted curriculum, while 10%, specifically our third and sixth grade teachers, piloted the ZERN Tier One curriculum. Next slide. Let's look at the data. The data speaks to the progress we've made over the past three years. In 22, 23, we experienced a slight dip in proficient and advanced levels. However, in 23, 24 school year, we achieved a notable increase of about 12% in proficiency. Next slide. Breaking it down by grade, we saw significant growth in third and sixth grades, our ZERN pilot grades, which underscores the impact of this targeted approach. Next slide. Looking at our iReady benchmark data, we saw similar positive trends. Our percentage of students performing at or above grade level rose from 5% in fall of 2023 to 25% by spring of 2024, a 20% increase. Next slide. This is compared to the district's overall growth, which went from 5% to 19%. Next slide. Shannon made even greater strides with the average student meeting 91% of their typical growth targets as measured by iReady. Next slide. Our data also highlights exceptional progress in second, third, and sixth grades, where students exceeded their typical growth expectations. Next slide. As we reflect on the progress we've made at Shannon Elementary, it's clear that our achievements are not due to any single factor, but rather the results of several key contributors working together to create a thriving learning environment. From cultivating a positive school climate to strategically utilizing data and piloting innovative curriculum tools, these intentional efforts have been foundational in driving our success. Let me highlight these key contributors to give you a deeper sense of how they positively impact our school community. First is positive school climate. When I began at Shannon in fall of 2022, I prioritized implementing the PBIS, Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports Framework, to create a welcoming, supportive environment for both students and staff. Our culture and climate team introduced the Four Bs program, which encourages students to be respectful, be responsible, be safe, and be ready to learn, helping to establish clear expectations for positive behavior school-wide. This approach was reinforced daily, not just in academics, but in every aspect of school life. We also committed to integrating social-emotional learning into every classroom. By dedicating time each week to SEL, students learn skills like self-awareness, empathy, conflict resolution, which strengthen their relationships with peers and enhance their overall school experience. This shift was transformative. Students were not only more engaged in their studies, but also more connected to one another and the school community. For our teachers, this climate of positivity and support contributed to a more collaborative and enthusiastic work environment. Teachers were motivated to bring new ideas, celebrate each other's successes, and enjoy the work they do with students. I truly believe that when educators are passionate about their school environment, it creates a ripple effect, fostering a love for learning in students. The joy and excitement teachers feel transfers directly to the students, making Shannon a place where everyone feels valued and motivated to succeed. Next slide. Second key contributor is our intentional use of iReady data. At Shannon, we took a highly intentional approach to using iReady benchmark data and My Path for both reading and math. Rather than treating this data as a static benchmark, we leveraged it as a dynamic tool to guide instructional decisions. During our weekly Wednesday collaboration time, teachers came together for structured data review sessions. These sessions went beyond simply analyzing scores. They involved deep discussions about students' needs, instructional strategies, and targeted interventions. By utilizing detailed iReady reports, teachers could form flexible instructional groups and set tailored priorities for each group, ensuring that every student receives support at their specific level. To further reinforce this individualized learning, we incentivize student engagement with My Path by setting a 30-minute weekly goal. Students were recognized for meeting this goal, which encouraged consistent practice and progress. Additionally, we involved parents by providing resources and information about My Path, enabling them to support their child's learning at home. This partnership with parents was instrumental in keeping students on track as it created a continuity of learning between school and home. Through these strategies, we created a culture of data-driven instruction, where teachers actively use data to inform their teaching. Students engaged in meaningful, personalized practice, and parents became allies in their children's academic growth. This intentional collaborative approach has been a significant factor in our progress, and we continue to refine our methods and maintain and build on these gains. Next slide. And third is the impact of the ZERN Pilot Program. The success of the ZERN Tier One curriculum pilot in third and sixth grade contributed significantly to our growth, particularly the 12% increase in proficiency this past school year. Next slide. Looking ahead, our team is committed to sustaining this momentum and deepening our impact. Building on the successes of this past year, we have developed a comprehensive plan for the 24, 25 school year that will allow us to continue supporting our students' growth and enhancing instructional practices. Here's how we plan to take these efforts to the next level. We are expanding the ZERN Pilot Program to more classes. We'll continue our data-driven discussions, small group instruction, and targeted support. Now with the addition of ZERN digital lessons school-wide. We're also increasing pull-out supports through a site-funded academic support provider, and we're adding teacher tutoring hours dedicated to math. Next slide. Our journey at Shannon Elementary has been one of purposeful growth and collaboration. Our successes are not the result of isolated effort, but rather a testament to the dedication of our entire school community, students, teachers, staff, and parents alike. We've built a culture, excuse me, where learning is dynamic and joyful, where challenges are met with resilience, and where every student feels valued and motivated to reach their highest potential. Our focus on social-emotional learning, positive behavior supports, and individualized academic pathways has created an environment where students thrive, not only academically, but personally. By prioritizing data-driven practices and innovative instructional tools like ZERN, we've empowered our teachers to provide tailored support that meets students where they are and propel them forward. Looking ahead, we are committed to sustaining this momentum. We will continue to refine our approaches, celebrate our achievements, and tackle new challenges with the same energy and dedication that brought us here today. We expand ZERN implementation, strong data practices, and additional supports for students and teachers. We are well-positioned to build on our progress and reach even greater heights. Thank you once again for your time and support. We're proud of the work we've done, excited about the road ahead, and confident that together, we can continue to create a school where every child has the opportunity to flourish. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Principal Gulick, not only for your presentation, but for your transformational leadership. Now we'd like to welcome to the podium Nystrom Elementary School, and I will introduce Principal Jamie Allardice.
Thank you. Board President, members of the board, staff, community. I am joined tonight by Masa Peterson, who is a first-grade teacher, and hopefully in a couple minutes, understand why a first-grade teacher up here talking about third through sixth grade SBAK scores really speaks to our work as a school. Next slide. As you saw earlier, Scarborough's Rope is really important in our work when we talk about literacy, and we always ground our professional development and our work in that. So you'll continue to see that, and it's all over our school as well. Next slide. When I zoom out from our progress and from our day-to-day work and think about why we've made a lot of progress in literacy, I think there's three big areas: vision and alignment. We have a common school-wide vision, I'll talk about in a moment, and alignment across classrooms and across grade levels. We love data, we use lots of data. We've really leaned into using Dibbles as a universal screener, K through six, and we use that three times a year for all of our students, as well as a progress monitoring tool. We use a lot of SIPs data as a progress monitoring tool on an ongoing basis, as well as fluency checks all of the time. And we use that data in our collaboration. It really determines what our instruction looks like in specific groups and classrooms. And then the final thing is PD, collaboration, coaching. We have really focused for the last five or six years on building the capacity of our adults, knowing that there's no one program that can really transform a school. Next slide. Also, I just want to kind of zoom out, and this is my 10th year at Nystrom, and there's no way we could have taken on this work 10 years ago. There's been a lot of work, and there continues to be a lot of work on culture and climate, both adult and student culture and climate. We've also been really intentional about what collaboration time looks like. Five or six years ago, I think five years ago, we started talking about curriculum and developed a vision for literacy. And then in 2020, 2021, we started our work with the Early Literacy Support Block Grant, and that has transformed what literacy instruction looks like at Nystrom. Next slide. And next slide. So we have a vision for literacy. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but there's two sentences up there that I think are really important, and I'll just read those. "We know that reading is not a natural process, and given all this, it is our job to explicitly and systematically teach students how to read. We believe that literacy, the ability to read, write, and understand, is a civil right." And when we share that, it is the last sentence that really gets people's attention. Understandably, it drives home the moral imperative of our work. But the sentence before really talks about how we're going to do it with explicit and systematic instruction. Next slide. So when we came back to in-person learning in fall of 2021, we first started using Dibbles. Dibbles is a universal screener. It differs from iReady, and it is not measuring proficiency. It is measuring a student's risk of reading difficulty. And so when we gave that assessment, up here you see our K3 data. You see that we had a tier-one issue. We could not intervene our way out of this, and so we focused on tier-one instruction, and we launched a walk-to-read model at that point. And Masa will talk about that in a little bit. Next slide. That same fall, we did a tremendous amount of professional development, not just on SIPs, but also on, so our teachers understood how students learn to read, sort of the why behind the curriculum that we had chosen. And then in tandem with that, we did a lot of coaching so that we were in classrooms, giving feedback, looking at data all of the time, to really fine-tune and make sure our implementation was strong. Next slide. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Masa to talk about our walk-to-read model.
Awesome. Thank you guys so much for having me. To understand all of the data and understand the impact, it's really important to understand what the walk-to-read model is and avoid any misconceptions along the way. So the walk-to-read model is based on the understanding that all students deserve to receive systematic and explicit instruction. And part of how that instruction is systematic is by it being mastery-oriented. So students receive instruction based on their level, and they are consistently assessed and cycled through instruction as needed. So if a student doesn't reach mastery over a certain amount of reading content, they actually don't deserve to move on to something more challenging. They need the other instruction to build a strong foundation for literacy. So in our walk-to-read model, grade level bands, so that would be kinder shares among kinder, first and second grade share, third and fourth grade share, and fifth and sixth grade share. They all create differentiated groups among their hallways. So students based on placement assessment data and consistent progress monitoring are placed in groups where they receive specific instruction that's differentiated to their level and determined by those universal screeners as well as curriculum-based assessments. So what that looks like in my hallway is that I teach two levels of groups, and all of the five other teachers on the hallway teach two groups. So of our six teachers, we have the capacity to teach 12 different groups of reading levels, which means that we span anywhere from teaching and reteaching letter names to students in first grade, which is a kindergarten standard, all the way up to leading book clubs and deep essay writing in higher-level groups. So the walk-to-read model has shown a lot of success in our school. Next slide.
So when we first launched our walk-to-read model, we really focused on tier-one instruction. And so that was what was happening in our classrooms with our teachers. Over the last couple of years, with the luxury or benefit of philanthropic dollars, we've been able to add reading tutors, and they are pushing in and pulling out students to get them an additional dose or more intentional practice. So while Ms. Masa is teaching her group, her other group may be working with a reading tutor on specific skills that she has just taught them. Next slide.
Another thing to take a look at when you're understanding some of our success is on the other side of the reading rope. So on one side of the reading rope, you would find things like word recognition, sounds, and things like that. And when you also look at the rope, you can see that language and writing is a big part of literacy. So we know that language development can support students in comprehending reading, but it also really supports automaticity in their reading as well. So one thing that we have done at Nystrom to help support all aspects of literacy has been increasing a focus on language comprehension as well as writing instruction. So we have increased our teacher collaboration as well as instructional minutes when it comes to those things. One thing to highlight is that increased writing instruction and the strategic ways that we are implementing writing instruction has actually been what we would like to think of as the catalyst for our incredible sixth-grade SBAK data, which we'll get into in just a moment. Next slide. Next slide. This is the rope that I was talking about. So in the cool colors, you see the language comprehension, and so those are things that we address with our evidence-based curriculum. And on the bottom, in the warm colors, we have our word recognition. So word recognition, we address with our walk-to-read model. And then outside of that, during ELA time, in non-differentiated groups, we work with language comprehension and writing. And then both of those things work together to create skilled reading and literate students. Next slide. Next slide one more time. Awesome. So a key contributor to success here is our teacher-led, data-driven meetings. So once a month or once every two weeks, we meet together to take a look at our screener data, as well as our curriculum-based data. And what we do in those meetings is we analyze our progress to best refine our implementation. And so we've used our knowledge that we've built through our professional development to essentially equip ourselves with the tools necessary to continue to adjust our instruction based on what our students need. The reason why that's really important is that we are actually constantly thinking about, are our students getting what they need? And are they making progress towards literacy? And if they're not, we don't need to keep doing what we're doing, we need to do something completely different. So we take a look at our data, and we make sure that our students are getting what they deserve. We have a student focus, as well as a teacher-knowledge focus in these meetings. And I think it contributes in a large way to our progress. Next slide. A lot of people are surprised when they hear about our school-wide data tracker. So our data is completely transparent school-wide when it comes to our reading instruction. We monitor, we progress-monitor students once a week or once every two weeks, and all of this data is transparently shared in our tracker. It's scary to type in your student's data into a tracker and know that anybody can click into it and see that they need to repeat a lesson again, or they need to take two weeks to go back over long vowels. But honestly, what it contributes to is a culture of trust and a culture of reflecting on our data. It's not our responsibility to look down on ourselves or our students if they're not doing well. It's our responsibility to give them the instruction that they deserve. Next slide. All right, so this is DIBELS data from our, this is our current fourth-grade cohort. So there's a lot to look at here on this slide. If you can look all the way on the left-hand side, this is what our fourth graders were looking like in reading at the start of their first grade. So I believe that was in fall of 2021. You can see that the majority of them were actually far below proficient, or in terms of DIBELS, at risk of falling behind in reading. Each column follows them through the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, and the end of year over our course of implementation of our new curriculum, as well as our professional development. What's awesome about this is you can see how hard we're fighting for everybody to become proficient. This isn't a goal of meeting 50%, meeting 60%. We see the red, and we want it to go away. We want every single student exiting our school by the end of sixth grade, reading, writing proficient at every level. What's really, really exciting, this was my first group of in-person students after COVID, and we know that reading instruction online was really challenging. What's really cool to see is just how much progress we can make, even in the course of a year. So if you take a look in the first three columns, we go from 3% at or above grade level all the way up to, that looks like 32% to me, just in first grade. And if you can look all the way to the right, you take a look at 65% meeting or exceeding expectations by the end of third grade, which I think just shows how our model is working. Next slide.
All right, and so those, what were first graders that Ms. Masa was talking about, were the, they took the SBAK for the first time last year. And so on this graph, you can see third-grade scores from the year before, from 2023 compared to 2024. And so that same cohort of kids, we saw a big improvement. And when they took SBAK, went from 8% in our third-grade cohort to 24%, which was super exciting. Next slide. So the next couple graphs are cohort data. So the first graph in each color shows one year, and then following that same group, the next year. So we saw growth in all of our cohorts from one year to the next, which is really exciting. And just a huge shout-out to our sixth-grade team, phenomenal growth in sixth grade. And usually, you see the opposite. That's usually where things kind of start to fall apart a little bit. But sixth grade really killed it with, I think, about 36% proficient. Next slide. The first, the graph on the left, you can see our school-wide proficiency and the jump this past year, about 8%. As well as all of our major subgroups saw a growth as well. So our Black and African-American students, Latinx, and our English learners all saw improvement this past year on SBAK. Next slide. So just to kind of wrap things up, school-wide, we are very aligned in our practices and what we're doing in terms of literacy instruction. We have, for now of the last four years, really focused on tier-one instruction with evidence-aligned curriculums. We are working continually on building teacher capacity, along with creating structures for meaningful collaboration. And we love our data. We look at data all of the time, and we use that to adjust the dosage of instruction that our students are getting, to make sure that they get what they need. And next slide. And I recognize that we are the last thing on the agenda, staying in between you and getting home. So I'll just close with, this is one of our favorite quotes. "We are not where we want to be. We are not where we are going to be, but we are not where we were." So thank you so much.
Thank you both, leading from, at the school level and from the classroom. So you've heard tonight from our central team, from two of our highest-growth leaders and their teachers, leading from different spaces, but all very intentionally using the strategy of building capacity of adults and using data-driven instruction to meet the diverse needs of our students. There are no silver bullets, just intentional and focused hard work to ensure that our WCCUSD students get the education that they deserve. So thank you so much for that bit of extra time on this rainy night to present this very important work, and we're open to any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Do we have any public comment?
We have no public comment.
Thank you. Board, do we have questions? We did three questions? We do have public comment? Okay, go ahead.
Ms. Yolanda Vera Allen, please unmute yourself.
There we go. Thank you so much. Just one quick question and comment as I look at the data. Thank you for that. That was very comprehensive, and I'm very excited to see across-the-board data for our school. Particularly distressing is what's happening with our foster youth. And as we look at our OCAP, which supplements their learning, and we see that those resources are going for instruction, the effectiveness, then I really, we have to call in the question, because they're losing ground. We're at zero. What can we do to shift that? Because currently, the plan isn't working. And these are some of our most vulnerable students. So please, I think we need to rethink whatever the strategy is for our most at-risk students to increase their academic success. They are counting on us, and they really need extra support that they're not given. Thank you again for your report tonight.
Thank you so very much for your comment. Board, do we have questions? Okay, we'll start to my left. Trustee Christian, three questions. And Board, again, three questions, two-minute comments. Go ahead, trustee Christian.
Yeah, my question, you know, thank you, first of all, for everyone for the presentation this evening, and especially for the hard work that you do. My questioning would be, you know, based on like, the most marginalized students in the district, you know, are they improving like they should? And when it comes from elementary, middle, and high school?
Thank you for that question. I can go ahead and start it, and then I'll pass it over to Dr. Huey to speak anything that I missed. So what we're noticing is that the student groups that are most vulnerable, so when we're looking at our African-American students, our English learners, our foster youth students, we're not seeing the trend that we want to see, right? And this is why we're using the strategy of really analyzing that data, ensuring that our school leaders are aware and disaggregating that data, and then using that data to be intentional, like these two school leaders have been, to change that data. So using strategies like small-group instruction, like using strategies like the walk-to-read model that Nystrom talked about, so that we can begin to see shifts in that data. And that's why we brought these two schools forward, because they are seeing growth with those student groups.
All right, thank you. That's a question I have.
Thank you so very much, trustee Christian. We're going to go trustee Ruckler and then clerk Gonzales Hoy.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for being here and being here so late and sharing all of this. It is a lot to take in. I almost don't know where to begin. So you've received this data. Where does it fall within all of the other data that you're collecting? iReady, they're working with DIBELS, doesn't sound like he's using iReady, but like... So when all of this comes back to you, like, how do you plan to digest it, make sense of it, and put a plan of action together to use it to the best of the system's abilities?
Thank you so much for that question, and that's really why we started with that first slide of the different levels of data, right? The way that our system is set up is that we're getting this data that we're discussing today. By the time that we get it, those students are in different grade levels, right? So it's not very actionable data. But it is important, because it tells us the direction that our district is headed in. And so we use it to inform and understand that where it is that we're headed as a district, to see if what we've implemented the year prior is working, or whether we need to make big pivots. Where we really live is in that Level 2 data and the Level 3 data, which includes our iReady assessments, our local assessments, like Principal Allardice talked about with SIPs, that really help us to be able to inform educators with the students that they have right now about the directionality that they're going with iReady assessments. Or, for example, with Level 3 data, the street data around exit tickets. And so analyzing Level 3 data is most important, because we want that data to have short cycles so that teachers are getting information about what students are understanding at the lesson level, so that they can actually go into the classroom, maybe even that same period or the next day, to correct any misconceptions that they're seeing. Not to say that this, you know, satellite data isn't important, because it very much is, and it paints a big picture of what's happening in the district. But the small cycles of data for map and street data are much more actionable, and that's exactly what we want our principals and our teachers using to change what's happening in the classrooms. And so we use it, to answer your question, both to understand the trends, to be able to determine district-wide strategies for how we proceed, and really to reflect the year following of what student groups were serving or not serving.
Okay, got it. Way back when, like three years ago, iReady was thought to be predictive of SBAK results. Have, has the district found it to be predictive of SBAK results?
That's a really great question. I actually researched this a few board meetings ago, because we had a few public comments about it. The reason we did adopt iReady was because of that predictability. And I don't have the scores in front of me, I'm not sure if anybody from my team does, but we're finding that it is predictable, right? That we can, we are seeing results that are consistent. And we're also testing our students a lot at the end of the year, right? So when we're giving iReady at the end of the year, we're also giving students the SBAK assessment. We're also giving, you know, students LPAC assessment. And so it's a lot of testing, and as a district team, we're trying to negotiate and figure out what assessments are really important, because we don't want to fatigue our students. And quite frankly, we don't want to lose the instructional time if we're not able to be actionable with it. And so, yes, we do find it to be predictive, and it is a long assessment. We've heard from many educators that it's an assessment that takes a long time. And so it's only good if we're getting rich data from it. And as you heard from our principal, Principal Gulick, it is rich data, and they are using it and seeing results.
And then, is there a plan to replace units of study? It's been panned everywhere. Teachers College isn't even supporting it anymore. So is there a plan to move away from it?
Can you repeat your question? I'm sorry.
I know, I'm sorry.
No, you're not feeling well. It's okay.
Units of study, Hawkins, is there a plan to move away from it?
Thank you. So, you know, we heard Nystrom speak very eloquently about their structured literacy approach, and we know that we currently have an adoption that doesn't oftentimes provide that. And so certainly, and I can pass it over to our director of ELA to speak more, but we have some schools that are using units of study, which has a more balanced literacy approach. And then we have some schools who have chosen a different curriculum, because they have really embraced the science of reading, as we're learning more about, and wanting to provide that very systematic phonics instruction that we've seen show results with our students and in some of our neediest places. And so, Ms. Bell, I don't know if you can come up and address the question, but we are supplementing currently to be able to provide that instructional support that we need for foundational skills, and phonics in particular. So this is where that SIPs curriculum that she was referring to is brought in. In fact, SIPs is the same curriculum that Nystrom is using. It is a science-of-reading-based curriculum, and it does provide systematic phonics instruction to be able to focus students on foundational skills. So I don't know, Ms. Bell, if there's anything you'd like to add to that.
I'm not quite sure if that answered, if that fully answered your question. What I would say in addition to that is the emphasis that we have now on curriculum-agnostic strategies allows site leaders to make those decisions. And where we're supporting our teachers is making sure that they have sound practices and pedagogy, excuse me, that support whatever curriculum is presented. So we realize we are a large district, we are curriculum-diverse, and so it's important for the educational facilitators, those in front of folks, who, in addition to the site leaders, to be able to make informed choices for their students. As Ms. Akasafa-Praskas has explained, the importance of data analysis and disaggregating data, and really being on top of how our students are performing, help us make those decisions. So I guess I would say, instead of being curriculum-led, we know that curriculum, high-stakes curriculum, is important, but it's also important to be good facilitators of education, educational practices. I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, and I would just add that we do feel like it is our district's responsibility to provide high-quality instructional materials, right? And so right now, we have this tension where we have a lot of different resources that are being used across our schools. And so we're working with district leadership to analyze, to make sure that we're aligning to research, and to provide that district-wide, so that we can have a really common approach. Because we know that when we provide the same high-quality education at Shannon, at Nystrom, that we do at any other school, then we're going to be able to more intentionally make growth as a district.
Thank you very much. Any other trustee Phillips? Thank you very much. Any other trustee Phillips, go ahead.
Facilities affect the academic outcomes that we're talking about right now.
I believe high-quality instruction happening in classrooms led by site leaders who are very intentional and teachers that are very intentional is what changes what we're here to do as a district, which is provide high rigorous instruction for our students. So no.
Dr. Hirsch, do you believe that facilities affect educational outcomes?
I was listening to Ms. Akasafoproskis and I 100% agree with her. I've been in facilities, just like Stige and sending them unified in other districts. And it does boil down to high-quality instruction and curriculum. I agree with her 100%.
Ms. Payne, do you believe that facilities affect educational outcomes?
I believe that every time we touch a building or a site, we have the opportunity to improve learning. Uh, there's a lot of studies from facilities that show um, all the different types of learning environments and the different benefits that they provide, indoor, outdoor, lighting, ventilation. We look to that data, um, we look to those studies to really try to incorporate um, those elements into the designs that we do. Um, but every single person um, in the operations division from our groundskeepers to our maintenance workers, um, custodians, facilities team, we know that our work is important. Um, and that every time um, we make an improvement, we have an opportunity to improve learning.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's three. Any other clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, go ahead.
Thank you. I want to start by thanking you for the presentation. Um, I have one question for you, Ms. Akasafoproskis, and then one for each of our amazing principals that presented tonight. Uh, so I'll start with you, uh, Ms. Akasafoproskis. So we saw some very difficult data to look at at the beginning. What are we doing in the district level to support leaders who work at schools where that data is being a reflection? Um, sorry, I'm not wording it right. Where they have the largest number of marginalized students as a reflection of testing.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for asking that question because we've had a complete shift in the way that we lead this year, really centralizing our principals' meeting to be solely invested in meeting the needs of instruction and teaching and learning for our site leaders. And so for the first time that I can remember, um, we've had a superintendent who's given us that latitude to be able to focus that principal meeting's time to be able to analyze that data, to have our central leadership. So for example, Dr. Chilka, in the first three principals' meeting, supported us, and actually Dr. Huey as well, and every single director, um, supported us in using EdgeClimber as our platform to be able to understand data, both at the big-grain data, but to be able to drill it down to student groups and to individual students, right? So understanding which are the students that I'm not achieving in my school? What are the foster students that I'm seeing dip in the data? To be able to toggle with iReady and understand the different intervention tools available to students and to make a plan of action for selecting those students that they're noticing in their data and needs attention and then taking that to their team. So we're really being intentional with all leaders because all of our schools have work to do, but very much pushing site leaders to disaggregate that data, to study it, to present it to their teachers, but then also to connect that to what's actually happening in the classroom. And so pushing the understanding of the Instructional Practice Guide. So it's the IPG, you may have heard, it's an acronym. But it is a basic rubric tool that tells us as educators, when we go into a classroom to observe, are we watching and observing rigorous instructional line to the Common Core standard? And so we've got our executive directors that are having those coaching conversations with principals when they're doing instructional site visits. We meet once a month with all site leaders in three different networks to visit a school site and to be able to walk classrooms and practice together. What are we observing? Do we have a common lens of what rigorous instruction looks like in mathematics, right? We know that we should see rigorous instruction at Lincoln Elementary School and that same rigor should match at Nystrom or at Shannon. And so building that common lens, that's what we mean when we say building the capacity of principals. Because our principals are not only operational leaders, they're the instructional leaders on campus. And you heard tonight from our two site principals, they're leading the instructional work. They are the coaches. They are the ones in the classroom sharing that work with teachers so that they have an extra set of eyes to improve instruction for students. And that's what we believe is going to disrupt the data that we're seeing in some of our media schools.
Thank you so much for that. Uh, Mr. Allardice and Ms. Gulick, first, thank you for all your work um, and for staying here till 10:00 PM. Um, actually, I'm sorry, before I ask the question, um, we do have to extend the meeting. I just saw the time, uh, because I mentioned 10 o'clock. Um, so I'll make a motion. Do we have a motion?
This is our only act of honor, but we have two consent items.
Okay, um, I move that we extend the meeting until 10:30 uh, to get through our uh, consent items.
Sir.
All right, thank you for that. Let's go straight to the vote. Trustee Wilson, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee. Sorry, trustee Espinosa Jr., your vote?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Phillips, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Christian, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Ruckler, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you, clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, your vote?
Yes.
And I'm a, and I'm a yes, excuse me. We're extending the meeting to 10:30 to cover our consent items. Please go ahead.
Thank you so much, President. Uh, thank you. Let's try that again. Um, you were both instructional leaders that are showing incredible results. Um, what would be a recommendation that you would have to the Board of Education? After seeing our district data and results and our theory of action, what would be your top one or couple recommendations that you have for us moving forward?
Sorry, that's a challenging one. Um, but I would start with that um, rigorous curriculum. Um, I believe Sonya Bell um, mentioned that it's not necessarily the curriculum, but as teachers in the classrooms, we use that curriculum as a guide and as a support so that we don't have to think on the fly and we're able to really put that deep work in. Um, and so if we had a curriculum specifically in language arts, um, I feel like we could make better gains. Also, we utilized iReady and we had that MyPath program um, that goes with it. I really believe that that MyPath supported a lot of our growth last school year because we practiced with it. Students used it on a daily basis and we continued to put that effort in. And unfortunately, this year, we don't have those same um, tools that we had before. Um, but by having that curriculum is really going to be supportive to us. Um, and just continuing with that. Thank you.
I think I would say two things. One, uh, similar, I guess I would say focusing on instruction, focusing on student achievement at the board level, just like we need to at a district level and school level. Uh, I imagine there's a million competing interests for you as board members. Uh, I know as a principal, there's a million things that can do to keep me out of classrooms or keep me from coaching teachers, giving feedback. Any of those things that are really going to move things for kids. But for me to be an instructional leader, I need to be focused on instruction. And I think if our board is able to do that too, we'll see some gains. I think the other thing is having the right data in front of us. I am a big proponent of DIBELS. We know that the state is uh, requiring a universal screener coming in the next, I think, year. And we've all, well, if you're old like me and been around, we've given DIBELS before and had no idea how to look at the data. But once I learned how to look at the data and understand the data, it became an instructional tool. And so that has been really, really powerful for me as well as our teachers. So I think there's a real opportunity there as we look, we have to adopt a universal screener. And if we double down on adopting the right one and having, educating ourselves on how to use that data, that would be really, really powerful.
Thank you so much to the both of you. President, that was my three, my third question.
Thank you so very much. Seeing no other questions, okay. Thank you so very much for the presentation. Thank you, Ms. Catherine. Thank you, principals. Thank you, teachers. Um, comments? Ah, any comments? You have a com, you, you have a before comment before you make the comment or you just have a comment? Just a comment. Okay, let's put it, two minutes on the clock. Trustee Ruckler, you have a comment also? Okay, we'll start this way and work our way around. Trustee Phillips, go ahead.
Um, first, thank you for the presentation. Um, I appreciate all the work that you are doing. Um, and I also appreciate the work that's been done at all the sites because there have uh, been some significant gains. I do want to say that I believe that facilities uh, affect outcomes. I don't believe that facilities dictate outcomes, but I do believe that they affect outcomes. If we look back in history and we talk about separate but equal, one of the reasons separate but equal was struck down is because the nation, the Supreme Court, people realized that facilities do affect outcomes. It's interesting to me to look at the chart um, that showed where the gains were over 3% in the district. It was very interesting to me to see that Stige was actually number two in mathematics. I think that's amazing. I think they should have been here. I don't know how the schools weren't picked, but they should have been here because I believe that they have done some remarkable work despite being in deplorable facilities. And if they actually had proper facilities, what could they have done? So I know everyone is entitled to their own opinion, but I think that this board should set the direction. And no offense, but if we have a superintendent and a CAO that don't believe that facilities affect educational outcomes, I think the board needs to make a statement about that, if that's what the board believes. Not that people are not entitled to their opinion, but this board is actually setting uh, the direction uh, of this district. And I also think to all of those folks who have paid for these bonds over the years, they're not going to keep paying if they don't matter.
Any other comments, board comments from the side? Seeing none, I'm going to move over to this side. Trustee Ruckler, go ahead.
Thank you. So I wanted to say out loud that I support a 3% growth rate per year and that's actually really good. And I've looked at a lot of districts and districts that are totally all-in, intentional and aligned are doing like 5%. So 3% is a gross, an aggressive goal and I, and I support it. Um, and it, I, it's late and that's all I have, so thank you.
Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, go ahead.
Thank you, President. Uh, thank you again for the presentation. Um, I really appreciated the response to my questions uh, from all three of you. Specifically because we know that site leaders sometimes can move a site forward or break it. And the intentionality of supporting leaders, especially separating them um, by challenges um, and by areas of, of need, I think it's great. So thank you for being so intentional. Um, to our site leaders, I think that you gave us and you gave me a lot to think about, about our priorities. Um, and I really appreciate that because we do sometimes get really focused on other things that matter, but that didn't ultimately probably even brought us to these seats, right? Um, so I wanted to thi, thank you for that. Um, I think that our data is hard to swallow because seeing 0% of foster youth succeeding in math breaks my heart. Yet when I go to the schools, I see amazing things happening at our schools. So, so I always grapple the difficulty of looking at test scores versus what's happening at our schools. Um, anyways, I'm running out of time, but I wanted to thank you all.
You actually have more time because it started before two minutes, but you're finished? Okay. Um, thank you so much for the presentation. I think one of the things that I want to speak to is not going back. We should not be going negative. We should always be going positive on these slides. So intentionally looking at those populations that are going backwards will, could be, should be a focus, I believe, of the, the district. I know it is, but that intentionality behind it and putting actionable steps behind, how do we stop from going backwards? I think that's one. And then what do we create the conditions to move forward? I think that's two. I think that when we listen to sites who are progressing and if they're progressing in all the areas that our other police, our other uh, populations are going backwards, we need to ask specifically, how are you moving your African-American population forward? How are you moving your foster youth forward? How are you moving your um, special ed students forward? How are you doing that? And li, look, listening to exactly what they're saying and then see if it works. Everything may not work at every different place. We know this is an onion. You peel it back one layer and then you get another layer. But I think what we can commit to is we don't go back. So we don't lose every year. We have to say that we're gaining every year. Uh, I am complete. Thank you so very much. I really appreciate it. Thank you, everyone. Please be safe going home. Thank you, thank you. We are now moving to our pool consent items. The first pool consent item, trustee Ruckler, you pulled consent item C5 ratified contracts. Go ahead.
I do. This is for Verkada, Verkada, the new volunteer system. Um, so I want to concentrate my questions on two areas and then make comment. So according to ED Code 49406, volunteer in school is supposed to have a certificate showing that they submitted to a TB risk assessment and this is supposed to be done by a healthcare professional. In the shift to this new um, uh, company, I understand that has been eliminated. However, the district, at the discretion of the governing board of the school district, the section shall not apply to a volunteer whose functions do not require frequent or prolonged contact with pupils. Is there a resolution on file from the board relating to TB testing and risk factor assessment?
To my knowledge, there's not a resolution on file, but I know that we received that question from you today. And I know that we are working with our team and legal counsel to respond to your question as well about the risk assessment.
Okay. Second is perform to the best of my ability to figure out how this thing works on the district website and some things I've seen that have come in email or I've seen like a couple of things on Facebook. When you access the When you access the Spanish form and you take your camera and you take a picture of it, you don't get the form in Spanish. You get the form in English. Is there a Spanish form for this document?
My understanding is that all of the forms are translated. However, I think you're raising a really important concern. And the team has been doing weekly meetings with the Vercata staff to troubleshoot and keep basically adjusting and improving the interface. And so we will bring that to the next meeting.
Okay. So I'd like to put a motion on the, I'd like to make a statement and I can't remember. It's too late and I'm too sick to remember what happens if you try and table an item, but I'd like to make a statement about Vercata. So can I do that and then to table the thing?
Is your intention to table the item?
But I want to make a, I want to make a comment.
But your intention is to table that?
Yeah, I don't think we should approve it tonight.
So you need to put a motion on the floor. Go ahead, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
No, so unfortunately for consent items, or sorry, for any item that we are tabling, you cannot make a comment afterwards. We have to go directly to a vote. So we would have to do comments and then afterwards motion.
Okay, well, maybe, you know, like I build it, what if I build it into my comment?
You're going to build it?
It won't be long.
Okay, so hold on. You're going to build the motion into your comment?
Right.
Okay, so you're going to build the motion into your comment. Go ahead.
Okay, so I appreciate the work and I think it's important that this process gets simplified and I'm on board with it. But reviewing the current status of where we are now, the role that has faced several challenges. And I think, you know, we should take a step back, work on a few more things before we go forward. The first is about the company that was selected and assuring the public about their issues with the Justice Department in terms of HIPAA. I know this has been resolved, but I keep hearing that people are concerned because they had a violation. And I don't think anything's gone out to say, okay, it's been resolved and they're clear. That's the first thing. The second is that I keep hearing from my constituents, especially at West County Mandarin, that their issues are not resolved, that they're falling into a you know, they've done the work and they can't get the things resolved. There, there's no one to contact. Ideas have disappeared and they're concerned about where their data is gone. So I think that needs to get looked into. And then I'm concerned about the T B issue, the testing or the waiver. And I'm concerned about the access for Spanish language speakers. And since this is paid for, I mean, you know, forget it, but it is paid for out of L cap. And the point was to increase accessibility for E L parents. And since a third of the district is E L learners and their parents are probably E L speakers, I think that this should get tabled until some of these challenges get looked into.
Go ahead, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Sorry. I want to second her motion, but I do have a question. So I don't know how to do that.
Yeah, kill me. Okay, so let's do this. Let's, let's get your question answered. Go ahead.
Thank you. Are there any negative outcomes if we don't approve this tonight?
So I would just caution that while Vercata is not a perfect system, we are processing 75 to 100 volunteers daily and it's allowing us to do so. And so we certainly need to continue streamlining and smoothing out. But our ability to actually get volunteers into schools is moving right now in a way we've never been able to move before. And so I, I hear the caution and I have a list of notes and I've seen Dr. Hurst take all the notes as well. But I also don't want growing pains of a transition to actually block access to the support that our schools desperately need.
Thank you, Ms. Sigler. So I would wonder if trustee Reckler, you'd be willing to take an amendment to your motion? My amendment would be that we approve the contract, but that we have a board presentation at the next board meeting around the system in which it answers trustee Reckler's questions. Which would not stop the process and it would allow us to bring the answers to the questions forward in the public manner. Would you be willing to do that?
I always have that. I want to put a second motion on the floor. The second motion is that we've had this presentation come to the safety committee. The company came, they answered all the questions. They have, is, is reported. My second motion is that we approve the contract tonight and give the board time to go back and look at that safety committee video. And see if, if, if that safety committee video answered any of the questions that we have now. Allow the staff to bring back those other questions that are not answered in the safety video to a future board meeting. And I would say that future board meeting would be December the 18th or in January. That's my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. So we will go to, we need to take a vote on the last motion first and then the first motion. Alright, does anyone need the last motion repeated? Yes. The motion is to approve the, approve the contract tonight, giving the board time to go back and review the safety tape that had the Vercata company come to the safety meeting. And to give time for staff to come up with, not come up with, but answer the questions that were presented tonight. And that that will come back to the board, the answers will come back to the board, December the 18th at the earliest or in January. That's the motion we're voting for now. Alright, we'll start with our student trustees. Trustee Wilson, your vote?
Abstain.
Trustee Espinoza Junior, your vote?
Yes.
Trustee Phillips, your vote?
Abstain.
Thank you. Trustee Christian, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Reckler, your vote? No. Trustee Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, your vote?
I abstain.
So that mo, I'm a yes, so that motion fails. Now we're going to go to trustee Reckler, your motion. Could you restate your motion, please?
So the first part of mine was to table it, but then we had a friendly amendment added on.
Thank you. It was that we approved the contract, but that we agendized this item for report discussion that answers the questions from the board in public on December the 4th. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go to that vote? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just want to get clarification on the question since it's going to a formal vote and staff may have to be responsible for bringing these back. So I have the HIPAA lawsuit is one. The T B risk assessment and clarity around that process. And then access to the Spanish language users and that form and making sure it's, it's accessible. What I'm not clear on is West County Mandarin issues. That was kind of broad.
So also, if you could repeat the first thing you said because I couldn't hear you?
Yes, it was HIPAA and the lawsuit concerns. The second was the T B risk assessment. The third was access to Spanish language for users. That form, making sure it's accessible. What was not clear is the West County Mandarin school issues. That was kind of broad.
Right. So I can, I can send that to you, but data's been lost supposedly. Parents have not gotten answers back from trying to call and figure out why they haven't been cleared. Another thing is that there hasn't been a way to get in touch with anybody except by phone. Seems like there's no email address for submitting questions. And I can go back through and forward other things that have been sent to me. So there's a list of like, I guess there's like a not, not, you know, unresolved issues, I guess.
President, may I add to that?
Go ahead.
Thank you. And I think that it goes to my intention behind my amendment. I think that we could all benefit from the public just hearing a presentation about what it is, how it works, who can they contact if they have trouble. That's where my intention is. Even if it's happened in the safety committee, I just feel like because it affects all of our schools and potentially so many families, it could really benefit us to hear that. Which I think would also absorb some of the concerns we've heard from West County Mandarin.
Give that. Okay, we're, okay, we're ready for the vote. Trustee Wilson, go ahead. You want me to repeat it?
Sure.
Okay, so the vote, the vote is to table this item.
Sorry, it's to approve the con-
I'm sorry, to approve the contract
Thank you.
with the information coming back in a presentation form on December the 4th back to the board. Is that accurate? Okay, so go ahead, trustee Wilson. Your yes? Okay, trustee Espinoza Junior?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Reckler?
No.
Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
And I abstain. Thank you. That passes. Thank you so very much. We are now moving on to consent item C10. Go ahead, trustee Reckler, you pulled it?
Yes, so just briefly, so we're having a contract for district-wide unarmed security guard services, new contract. How do we know or what assurances do we have that the new service is going to be more reliable and help protect our schools more efficiently and effectively than the last provider that the district used?
Thank you for the question. I'm going to defer to Michael Booker to answer. He's been involved in the conversations regarding the comparison of the two companies.
Thank you for that question, trustee Reckler. For the last three years, the company, company that we currently have has not been addressing the needs that we have as a district in terms of keeping our campuses safe during after hours. So much so that we have incurred significant loss over a three-year period at schools that have been repeatedly broken into. We've had numerous meetings with this company and they still have not addressed those issues. So we went through a process of putting it out to bid to various companies. And based on that process, there were folks that were involved that looked at all the companies, their process, what they could give us, what they could guarantee. And through that process, we determined the, the company that is presented for this, on that contract.
Okay, so they've been vetted to ensure that we're going to get a higher level of service?
Yes, that there, there was a committee that looked at all the items. It was tabulated using a point process. And through that, the company was determined to be the most, or the most effective company for, for this district.
Okay, thank you.
Are you going to move this item?
I'll go ahead and, and move the new contract with I'll go ahead and move the contract.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. To the vote. Trustee Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Espinoza Junior?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Reckler?
Yes.
Thank you, clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you very much. We are-
President Smith, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I just realized that when we're pulling items, you said we're pulling all of C5, not just with the one contract. So if it's okay with you, I'll just move that we approve all of C5 contracts.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yes.
Thank you. We're going to go back and vote for all of C5 just to make sure that the vote is accurate. Trustee Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Espinoza Junior?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Phillips?
Yeah.
Thank you, trust, or clerk, sorry, trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Reckler?
Yes, I'm approving all but the Vercata contract.
Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you so very much. Board, that is all the business that we have time for tonight. We are moving to adjournment. The next scheduled Board of Education meeting will be December the 4th, 2024, at Dejawn Middle School. We are adjourned. Good night.